Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Here.
Rowe. Begley.
Here.
Harding. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Rowe.
I am the President of the United States of America, and I am a patriot of the republic for which I stand, and I am a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask you to remain standing this week. Thanks for remaining standing. I have short remarks, but I think it's appropriate to stand. We're blessed to live in the greatest country on the planet. Sure, we have issues, but I'm thankful to live in a city of Omaha and the great state of Nebraska. We're all keenly aware that that comes with a price. Many men and women paid the price for the freedom we enjoy. Next Monday is Memorial Day, a national holiday that was established for us to remember those who made such a sacrifice. I regret that in some ways we've minimized the importance of the day. For many, Memorial Day is just another day away from work. For most of us, it marks the beginning of summer activities, baseball, and vacations. While for others, Memorial Day signals the day one can start to wear white to church or to the neighborhood picnic. We'll not be meeting next week, so I thought it'd be appropriate if we just took a moment of silence this afternoon, maybe even a bow your head, just for a moment. Oh beautiful for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for Purple Mountain majesties above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful for heroes proved in liberating strife, who more than self their country loved, and mercy more than life. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Maybe sit down.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here. We look forward to hearing from you on our many items today. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. And I also want to make you aware of a resource. If you have trouble hearing today, we do have listening devices available here at the building commission's table, should you desire to request one of those. Today, we will have a proclamation, but first, given the events of the morning, and even just in the last hour downtown here with another tornado warning and a sheet of rain coming down, we wanted to hear from the Public Works Department on their citywide assessment of how we're doing with some of the flash flooding today. Mr. Tyler, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works. First, I'd like to make sure everyone knows solid waste collection might be delayed today because there was flooding at the landfill and their interior roads are flooded, so they're trying to get all that back in order. So recycling will be picked up, yard waste will be picked up, but we may have some delays until the landfill gets restored until tomorrow. So leave your carts out overnight if you need to, and we'll get to them when we can. As far as the flooding, and I'll put some of this stuff up on the screen. Push it up all the way there. Thank you. Okay, so this is, I'll try to focus this in a little bit. So this is, kind of shows, the bubbles, the larger the bubbles, the more rain we had. So this is showing that kind of in the northwest part of the city where we had five to seven inches of rain. And that statistically, that happens less than 1% of the time in any given. It's only supposed to happen like, kind of, once in every 100 years is the way they look at it statistically. So we had rain last night, and this does not include what we just got over the last hour, that is just overwhelming. We do not have the capability to design infrastructure to handle this type of rain event. The southern ports of the city saw a little bit less. The creeks saw significant flooding, but not escaping the levees. But we saw kind of record reports of the Big Papio up north along Fort Street, and it looks like there's been some significant flooding down in Sarpy County where the papio all comes together. But the papio levees, and we thank the NRD for what they do. The NRD levees performed very well in last night's event. I want to get to, this is showing some of our reports. And I don't know if I can zoom that in at all.
On the top there, the top button?
Okay. Okay. So this is up quite a bit from when I talked this morning. Basement backups, if it comes up through your floor drain, 70 calls thus far. Missing manhole covers, a lot of those came in through 911 or the fire department, and a lot of those got on right after the rain event, 69 of those. Overland flooding, that's a fit someone reports is coming in through like their windows in their house. Plugged inlets, we found that we were getting a lot of inlets plugged just by the sheer amount of hail that fell, and that our crews were going out there and clearing the hail out of the intersections, and that was causing places to flood that you wouldn't normally see in our system today. And again, a lot of reports of street flooding. We do ask people to, if they had something happen or they saw something happen, especially if you had a basement backup, we don't know that occurs unless you call in. So we would like people to call the mayor's hotline at 402-444-5225, or we can call out sewer maintenance at 402-444-5332. Some of these numbers look big. I will say that we have done an enormous amount of work through our sewer separation and our CSO program to where if those projects weren't in place, we would have had a lot more basement backups than what we saw today.
Jim, can you move that document just a little bit to, I guess, your left? That we're missing that first column.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so that's, yeah, so we do, what we do is we report those by kind of quadrant of the city. You'll see the northeast, southeast, that's where our combined sewer systems, that's where we would typically see basement backups. Northwest, those basement backups, that could be something like an overloaded sump pump, or it could be an overloaded sanitary sewer even. So again, in a storm like this, if we wouldn't have done a lot of those separation projects in the eastern part of the city, we would have had a lot more basement backups reported. So that was a very successful program that we've had in the past. But again, we do ask people to report those problems when we find them. I think that's about what I wanted to report. If there's any other questions, we do have some, we do have some items related to the Papio Creek later on in the agenda, and I can talk further at that time.
And are you able to address the center of street situation too with that closure and MUD water main situation?
We'll have to continue to talk to MUD like that. What we've seen is they have the whole street cut off right at this time, and we'll have to continue to work with MUD on the extent and the, how long that's going to take. So right now, all I can say is we issued a street report, and we're going to go at what that street report gets until we get any additional information.
Between 60th and 72nd Street?
Between 60th and 72nd, near the Baxter Arena. Yes.
And then maybe one more, just one more time, the numbers to call for folks if they need resources or city assistance or want to report a backup?
We can always call the mayor's hotline, and that's 402-444-5225. And the hotline will get that to our sewer maintenance staff. Our sewer maintenance number is 402-444-5332. And then we will go ahead and, we will go ahead and as those calls come in, and we ask the, we ask the public to be patient because it takes some time to investigate all these things and respond, especially when we have these many calls coming in. But please call in, otherwise we don't know when things are happening inside a person's place of residence or business.
Yes, that's a good message, and I think you're just giving out a couple of different numbers there. I think you misspoke on the mayor's hotline, 444-5555, right?
Carrie would be angry at me if I got that wrong, so I apologize.
So 5555 is the mayor's hotline?
Yes.
And 533?
5332 for sewer maintenance. Yes.
And how about down limbs?
Down limbs, we can call the mayor's hotline as well, but our streets is 402-444-4919 for our streets department.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate your work on this. I know we walked in together this morning, and I know you've been hard at it, so thanks for that update.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers will now move to a proclamation, which coincidentally is about National Public Works Week. Mr. Begley, as Public Works Chairman of the committee, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everybody. Whereas public works professionals focus on the infrastructure, facilities, and services which are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to maintaining the standard of public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of Omaha. And whereas vital public services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of equipment operators, maintenance foremen, engineering aides and techs, environmental quality control techs, and other public works professionals employed at all levels of government and the private sector. And whereas public works professionals are responsible for building and rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation infrastructure, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our communities. And whereas it is in the public's interests for all citizens of Omaha, including civic leaders, to gain knowledge of and maintain and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual Public, National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Omaha officially designates the week of May 19th through 25, 2024, is National Public Works Week, and urges all individuals to recognize the contributions made to the community by our public works professionals. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the city to be affixed on this 21st day of May 2024. Mr. Rousier.
Yeah, if you'd like to offer any remarks, go ahead, please.
Councilman Begley, thank you for that. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Austin Rousier. I live at 8911 Q Street. I'm the past president and delegate for the Nebraska chapter of the American Public Works Association. Thank you for recognizing National Public Works Week to recognize and advance the public works profession. In my football-playing days, I was an offensive lineman. And much like offensive linemen, public works professionals are our best when you don't hear about us. So sometimes when we hit the limelight, it means that things aren't always great for the public. But that's what public works professionals do, is we work really hard to make sure that everything works great for people in their lives, so that everybody can just go about their business and not have to worry about what's going on with the streets and with their sewers and things like that. But public works professionals come from a variety of backgrounds. They're snowplow drivers, electricians, engineers, policymakers, clerks, welders, laborers, mechanics, arborists, heavy equipment operators, and much, much more, working together for the common good of their communities. The American Public Works Association is a gathering place for these professionals, and has nearly 32,000 members in North America. We meet regularly with conferences. We typically have large turnouts at conferences and events where we learn from each other, we share experiences, and we understand the diversity of issues that we all encounter on a day-to-day basis. The theme for the 2024 National Public Works Week is Advancing Quality of Life for All. Public works contributes to advancing and enhancing our quality of life, no matter where we live in the world. Public works professionals provide essential services that lead to happier, healthier, and more vibrant communities. The Advancing the Quality of Life for All theme shines a spotlight on the way public works professionals advance our quality of life, whether as a first responder to a natural disaster, regular waste pickup, or a myriad of other ways these professionals silently serve their communities. Public works professionals advance the quality of life by providing an infrastructure of services and transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, emergency management and first response, solid waste and right-of-way management. They are what make our communities dynamic places to live and work. Thank you again for helping us celebrate the quiet work these professionals do that makes life better for all of us. And with that, I appreciate your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about public works.
Thank you. Mr. Begley, I believe your lights on?
Yeah, thank you. Austin, thanks again for accepting this. And I do want to thank your team and the local 251 employees of the City of Omaha for the great work they do on all the things that I read in that proclamation, the infrastructure, when it's raining, when it's snowing, when the roads are torn up. And I appreciate your, helped me understand the three years I've been on the council, all the ins and outs that I still am learning every day, but you've helped me with that. And I do appreciate the great work even our staff does. Steve Scarpello, we get constituents' calls. Your team is really great at assisting and helping people understand and get their problems solved. So thanks to you and your team for this, glad to read this proclamation for you today. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. And he doesn't know that I'm going to do this, but I think it's an appropriate time to also mention, Public Works Director, Mr. Stube, was recently recognized by the profession as well. He received the Nebraska Engineering Pillar Award, awarded by the American Council of Engineering Companies here in Nebraska for service to the profession, so we want to recognize him here today too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for 1111 located at 6061 Maple Street.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please. Come on down, just give your name and address.
Hi, I am Twilia Fletcher. Home address is 325 Riverside Drive.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I know this is a very popular location in Benson. We like to go there ourselves, so I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Motion in a second? Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion's approved, seven to zero.
Thanks, sir.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Firewater Grill located at 7007 Grover Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Sri Swaminathan. Address is 7007 Grover Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68106.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion's approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class C liquor license for Duck Duck Bottle Shop located at 4917 Underwood Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, council and Mr. President. Thanks for having me. Casey Fichtum, address is 4811 California Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Casey, I appreciated our conversation this week. I think this is a great new concept you have in Dundee to essentially what is a house, and you'll be using the backyard for a bit of an entertainment spot for food and drinks, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you've done outreach to the neighbors, and that's gone well, and probably music until 11, it sounds like?
Yes, exactly. Those are our hours. So music till 11. Outreach to the neighbors has been overwhelmingly positive, and we've been participating in other neighborhood gatherings and activities regarding, with other merchants joining that association and have talked about it, trying to partner with other merchants on that strip in our area. We're joined to two commercial properties, and behind us there's apartments and a garage space. So we think that, you know, noise shouldn't be a problem with our establishment.
Sounds like a really neat concept. Welcome you to the Dundee business district area. Somebody this morning asked me, what's the coolest new place coming? And I said, well, it's on the agenda today.
Oh, awesome. Yeah, thanks, you. That's humbling. I appreciate it. And being on the ground where things happen in the city is, I'm usually in corporate rooms all day. So this is cool. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, you bet. Is there a motion?
Motion approved. Subject to outdoor re-permit.
Yes. Motion in a second, subject to permits. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item is approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Item nine, to consider a Class C liquor license for West End Cocktails and Appetizers located at 1529 South 203rd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. We have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Mungard. We'll get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that.
There we go. James Mungard, 1429 Pine Road.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Some motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 10, to consider a Class D liquor license for Bill's Barbecue and Convenience located at 4414 North 24th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Obuda Chamber, 10 goals, 2233 Edgewood Lane, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. You know, you're here today, and we can't, we don't necessarily consider taxes for purposes of denying a permit, but it came to our attention that you're $22,000 behind in restaurant and tobacco tax that you haven't paid the city, but you collect it from your customers, and then you're keeping the money and not paying the city back. Is there any reason why you're not doing that like all the other restaurants and bars?
I'm not aware of that, but we will check into that. We are the, we are getting a new license under Chambers Incorporated. That's a new ownership. That would be the previous owner that may own the taxes.
Okay, so you purchased this?
Yes.
You purchased this place?
The Chambers Corporation, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, can you commit to our council that?
Sure, no problem. If there's anything, oh, that will be, definitely take care of it.
Okay, you might want to check into that.
Yes, ma'am.
With the city, because I think the city's been trying to contact, well, at least the current owner. I don't know how long you've been in charge, but there's been no response.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I believe we have time on this. I think I checked with the clerk earlier today. I mean, if we want to lay it over and have this worked on to see if you can get a response from the former ownership before we move this on to the liquor commission. So I'll propose to lay this over until...
Until, I believe it's June 4th.
There's a motion to lay over till June 4th in a second? No further lights? Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, six to one.
We'll see you then, and hopefully you can get some things clarified before then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Items 11 and 12 can be considered together for Deer Crest North located southeast of 114th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from DR District to R4 District. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat.
Public hearing and vote on items 11 and 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Hello, members of council. John Coolidge, engineer for the project here on behalf of the owner, 14710 West Dodge Road. We're back before you. We had some complex engineering solutions to get through, and the Public Works Department helped me out. They're engineers there, so I want to publicly thank them. And I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Please come down.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Josh Weiner. I'm an attorney with the law firm Kutaq Rock. I'm appearing today on behalf of my client, R&amp;L Carriers, and I'll preface all of my comments by saying I don't know that I'm appearing necessarily as an opponent, but the context of that will make sense in a moment. I understand the ordinance before the council today is the approval of a plat for the Deer Creek North subdivision and rezoning of the 72 acres southeast of 114th and State, excuse me, State Street. My client, or more accurately, an affiliated company of theirs owns two parcels of land that are adjacent to the proposed subdivision, approximately 35 acres in total. The western lot, where my client operates a truck terminal facility, comprises 25 acres, and it's currently zoned industrial. And there is a adjacent east lot that's comprised of 10 acres that in total combined for 35 acres, and that's currently zoned agricultural. R&amp;L purchased the east lot with the prospect of expansion of its facility. And generally speaking, R&amp;L's operations are such that truck center in the morning, they leave in the evening, and my client's gone to great lengths to ensure it's a good neighbor and with neighboring landowners. And while we don't have an objection per se, as I mentioned before, to the plat approval, our concern is the impact that this could possibly have on any future development or rezoning of the easternmost 10 acres that my client owns. And we understand that any future rezoning, we need to go through the Planning Board. I've appeared at the Planning Board on the applications of Deer Creek and last year to make similar comments. And we've gone through the, R&amp;L has gone through the pre-application process, and we intend to file a application with the Planning Board in the near future. And so the purpose of my comments today, members of the board, and I'll be brief, are simply to inform the city council of R&amp;L's intent, as well as celebrity homes or any other interested parties of our intent to rezone that easternmost 10 acres for the possibility of future expansion. And again, as I mentioned, we don't have an objection necessarily to the, to the proposed ordinances. Unless there's any questions, I thank the council for their time.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents to 11 and 12? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
John, I'm sorry, before you sit down, can I add a couple of questions? I just want to make sure I have, oh, the other John, sorry, John. The parcel you're talking about, is that on the south side of State Street?
It would be on the north side of State Street.
Okay, so it's across the street to the north front of the development?
Yes, catty corner to the northwest of the, of the proposed subdivision.
And that's currently zoned AG, correct?
The westernmost 25 acres where the current facility operates, that's zoned industrial. There's an additional 10 acres that abut that, that is cur-
Abuts it to the east.
Abuts it to the east, correct.
And that's zoned Ag.
It's currently zoned Ag.
So that really fronts 114th- So, that really fronts 114th Street, I believe, correct?
I believe that's correct. I had a map at one point.
And you've gone through pre-app with, with planning?
We have, councilman, and currently we're in the process, I think, of finalizing a formal application. And the only other comment I'll make is the zoning from agriculture to industrial would be consistent with the city's master plan. Those are the comments we received at the prior board meeting where we made similar comments. So, we're stating for the record, I think, our intent to put others on notice. But with that being said, we don't have objection to the matter in front of the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, I'll ask other John. John Coolidge, if you could. I'm assuming, but I shouldn't. Were you, are you aware of the future plans?
Yes, we're aware of all the development on the north side of State Street. There's the Google plant that's directly across, and then the, to the northeast, the trucking concern. And the improvements with State Street have been coordinated, and we understand that. We've, there's some noise attenuation easements associated with those arterials, and we have decent setbacks from those streets. So, we feel secure about our-
You don't see an issue with it then as well?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 11 and 12 are approved, seven to zero. Items 13 through 17 can be considered together for North Omaha Airport, located northeast of 72nd Street and Bennington Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, be it communication and support. Item 13 is an ordinance to rezone this property from DR District and AV District to AV District. Items 14 and 15 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 16 is a resolution to approve the special use permit for a major amendment to allow aviation services in the AV District. Item 17, a resolution to approve the special use permit for a major amendment to allow development in the ED overlay district.
The public hearings and votes on items 13 through 17 are today. First, we'll hear from the applicant, I think, with a brief overview of the case, and then proponents and opponents. Mr. Ackerman.
Sounds good. Patrick Ackerman, 11901 North 72nd Street, owner of the North Omaha Airport. I do have the presentation up here. I'll show. All right, first thing I want to touch on real little bit is the evolution of the project. It's been over two years. We've been working with the City of Omaha staff for this project. We started in February 2022. One thing we did want to confirm with the city is that they did want to still have it as an airport. So, that was a key portion of why we've spent so much time on revitalization of the airport itself. The initial proposal we had a year ago, over a year ago now, actually included a hangar hotel with a restaurant included in it for kind of flying in and spending the weekend there. We went through four rounds of Planning Board with them and eventually got laid over at the final one. And after that, we went through a whole analysis with the FAA to identify any potential FAA airspace issues that may exist after that work. So, that was kind of spring of 2023. Now, after we come out of the analysis with FAA, what I, what we decided to do was essentially redo the project, where we take the hangar hotel out. It was very confusing for people to understand what that concept was, take the restaurant out, and really focus on hangars. We were short on hangars around the Omaha metro area, and so, kind of giving some different options for hangars and space there at the airport. We're proposing putting in private hangars with five different sizes in different experiences people can have at the airport, whether it's a small T hangar, a box hangar, or a larger lifestyle hangar, as I call it, where you can actually have some additional facilities in your hangar. Again, knowing the master sort of hangars, this is a natural pivot for us over the last year. We think it's a, it's a good project, and it's what we're setting out to do, is to actually make the airport sustainable longer term. We worked the planning staff and the aviation consultants to finalize a review of the FAA compliance or airspace concerns, and created a path for resolutions for any additional airspace concerns that existed. This was the original aviator's hotel we had there. I did want to touch on the FAA analysis that we did. Again, it was a whole summer's long worth of work with them. Submitted 210 airspace studies to the FAA in the spring of 2023. After review was done by them in the fall of 2023, only about 25% were of concern from the FAA. To date, thus far, we've been working really hard to resolve as many of those as we can on our own. And right now, we're over half of those violations being already resolved there at the airport or off the airport. And that's working with some neighbors. That's also doing stuff around the airport itself. We still have roughly a little over half yet to do there at the airport. The remaining ones that are listed there do have a path for resolution and working with the City of Omaha, largely with zoning code compliance with those that are nonwilling to resolve those on their own. The proposal that we have here today that you're, obviously, there's a lot of components to this, but I wanted to highlight the key components to it. One is an operations building addition, which will allow me to have additional equipment out there to maintain the airport there and all the facilities that we have there. Three new box hangars, which are larger square hangars that you can have, larger airplanes in than just a single prop, and you can have a restroom facility in them as well. We also have 19 larger lifestyle hangars, as I call them. They are much larger, and they will have ability to put in a conference room or a place to hang out, potentially a bedroom in there as well. Those are much larger. They're 3,700 square foot as well. We also are adding airport fencing today. It's not fenced, which creates some safety concerns around the airport, and so, we want to make sure we get it fenced as part of this, this work. On the north side there, this square building here, we have nine new T hangars, as they're called. They're smaller, about 1,050 square foot hangars that fit a smaller, single-engine airplane in them for, for storage. And then finally, we also have the runway extension to the north. I did want to highlight, there's no additional change to the runway paths, the size of airplanes. All that maintains the same. It's just adding additional concrete for safety purposes, taking off to the south or landing to the north. I did want to touch on real quick about the private airport status. Today, the airport is private status and has been since 2021, where it was formerly public use for over 20 years prior to that. The City of Omaha Code does allow for private-use airports to be compliant, and so, that's, again, what we are today. For a private airport, pilots need owner's permission from myself to be able to land there and use the facilities, and we are granted on a case-by-case basis there at the airport. The new hangars will be private, and they will include a use agreement to operate in and out of the facility for those that are leasing or owning those hangars that they're at the airport. They could be used by individuals or businesses spraying operations. It could be an AMP mechanic, those kind of things, or individuals that are using them. I did want to highlight, you know, the airports across the US, there's three times more private airports than public airports. So, saying anything around a private airport being unsafe because of its status is an incorrect statement. There's a significant amount, tens of thousands of these private airports around the country that are operated safely today. Lastly, just some project facts I wanted to highlight with you guys. We've, we've worked with FAA, Nebraska Department of Transportation, the city staff, the planning department, and their aviation consultant for the last couple of years, specifically the last eight to nine months on this specific project and the, and the changes we've made. We've made significant progress in resolving issues around the airspace concerns, and we have a path to resolving any remaining issues there as well. We have lots of pilot interest in our new project, and it's been a lot of excitement of a chance to lease or own one of these new hangars. Private-use airports are prevalent around the country, and that status does not create any additional concerns. For the airport to be sustainable long-term and continue to be a strategic general aviation asset to the City of Omaha, we request this to be approved with our approval recommendation we have. So, I'll pause there with any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll have some, but first, we'll ask for other proponents. Please come down.
Mark Farrell, 12404 North 69th Street. Councilmembers, thank you for allowing me the time to come and speak and for listening to my comments. I'm an avid pilot and a supporter of the North Omaha Airport. I learned to fly a little bit later in life. I was in my mid-30s when I learned to fly. And one of the most memorable flights that I think I ever took was the first time I flew in to the North Omaha Airport. It's a small airport. It's got its own personality, if you will. It's not an Epley. It's not a Millard. It's not a Lincoln or a Grand Island. It's, it's a small, close-knit community that basically is a family. In the 40 years since I got my license, I've amassed about 4,500 hours of flying, and it's all general aviation flying, all fun flying, recreational flying. I've been at the North Omaha Airport for the last 33 years, and I've hangered there in Quonset Huts and the old World War II hangars, and can definitely attest that they've seen their use. And there is definite room for improvement there, and I'm really supportive of Mr. Ackerman and hope you guys are as well. During the 40 years of my flying, I've seen birthdays. There were national fly-ins that were held at the North Omaha Airport. The Cessna 12140 Association had a national meeting there years ago. There's been birthdays, picnics, reunions, graduations, and even weddings at the airport, and all done safely and within the confines of the private property that's there, and I don't believe anybody on the outside has been bothered. I currently live as quoted, and my neighbors are all supportive of the, supportive of the airport. And as you can see my address, I'm right to the east of the airport itself. So, in closing, I just want you to know that the airport, it's a crown jewel of Omaha. You may not know that, but if you ask most of the other aviators that, that fly around this area that have flown into the airport, they can attest that the airport is a jewel that should be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, opponents? Please come down.
Dundee I, Johnson, the Johnson Equestrian Foundation and the North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd. I think the North Omaha Airport is a wonderful program. If PJ Morgan let us have that land across the street, we've been asking for it. I've flown out of there. I have license to fly. No, they took my license. They said, "I have to do a solo first, then I get my license."
Other opponents?
Excuse me one minute.
Sure. And just to give you a sense of how many opponents intend to, intend to speak today? Okay, a couple more?
This one here?
Yep.
Okay. Probably still not easy to see, but I thought I'd bring this up as a demonstration for everyone. My name is Dan Lanfor, 7030 Bennington Road. Just because the planning department doesn't understand the aviation zoning codes, which they are responsible to administer and enforce, doesn't make the codes antiquated or outdated. The planning department has been negligent and subordinate in its public safety in not performing their obligation to enforce these codes by allowing homes to be built in such proximity of the runway. If you look at this picture, you can see I have two diagrams drawn up here, two scale, that mimic, that have the borderlines that are supposed to be protected by the zoning codes. And if you see the comparison of Millard on the left and the North Omaha Airport on the right, you will see that there are an encroachment upon those by homes, such as the one that Mark has that just came up here. And those encroachments cause a safety concern. And they are, some, three of those homes actually violate the transition zone of the airspace for the FAA and are rated in Pats' report as a, as a critical finding. Beyond that, it was the planning board's responsibility to make sure that those spaces remain protected, and they did not do that in their due diligence. And that was, that's what brings us to our safety concerns, along with some of the actions that have taken place there. Despite what they say, the, the only differences, the only values that I could find that were just... The remaining zoning codes created by someone knowledgeable about aviation protect the airport from encroachment by development are absolutely relevant and applicable to protecting the safety of both aircraft operations and the public. It is only, it only coincident that the same value of 1,000 feet was used to define the width of the runway area zones as it's used for the horizontal separation for Part 77 Precision Approaches. I, I know that they went to a consultant. That consultant also was somebody that was used by Keith Edquist in the past and was found to be inaccurate in their assessments of their Nebraska Department of Transportation's airport safety analogy. I, my question to the planning department is, why didn't, why didn't you ask questions about the zoning codes? Been directed directly to the FBOs where a certified flight instructor is available. You can answer questions about aviation training, ask questions and perform any aviation training and knowledge transfer. As flight instructors, they had direct contact with the FAA and Flight Standards District Office to accurately assess and answer questions that should arise. They were a good source that should have been used. Per the FAA Airport Land Compatibility Planning Advisory Circular, the number of, these are, these are important values that I'm trying to draw out, the fact that all the open area around the North Omaha Airport is, is either enclosed or being asked to be taken up by Pats' new hangars. Per the FAA, the, the number of people concentrated in an area near an airport is a land-use characteristic tied most closely to the consequences of aircraft accidents. The most direct method to, of reducing the potential severity of an aircraft accident to the people and property in proximity of an airport is to limit the maximum number of structures and our people in areas close to the airport. Limiting the number of structures around the airport may also reduce the severity of the aircraft accidents to passengers and aboard the aircraft. Limiting the average use density over the site, coupled with designated areas of open space, reduce the risk of associated accidents. An airport and a local community should evaluate density of airport, taking into account the density of the overall area. For example, if a GA airport is located well outside the developed area, and there are expanses of open space that border the airport, it is important to establish, it is important to establish land-use controls that may, will maintain this open area and establish low permissible densities for those areas around the airport. In comparison, in areas where large amounts of development may have already taken place, the goal would be to reduce any ensuing development to be at or below the current levels. The essentially focus on making the current situation no worse. I'm not willing to let the planning department experiment with new ways to endanger my life and those living around me with the ideas generated by a novice and inexperienced pilot with no business plan or a basis for, in reality. Never before in Nebraska aviation has there been a collection of such extremely poor ideas, recommended building a series of hangars in such proximity to residents, recommended recreational pilots to use the private airfield like it was a public-use airport, promoting less skilled recreational pilots to operate under the Epley Class C-controlled airspace with less than 1,200 feet above the ground before they violate the airspace used to be, used by commercial carriers. The most challenging airport in the area, with its narrow width and short length and obstacles around it, given in, giving indiscriminating, handstand. Giving indiscriminate waivers out until they meet the pipe drains of the applicant. The gross negligence by the public department to enforcing airport zoning codes. The irrelevant irresponsibility to the planning part to protect the safety of the neighbors around the airport. Promotion of the airfield- the airport, promotion of the airfield with so many extensive violations, the FAA and the Nebraska Department of Transportation took away support funding and oversight regulations against best practices in airport design, building on both sides of the runway. This perform, this perfect storm of poor ideas will cause loss of life, and will, and will remind those, and let me, will remind those to be informed of, in this city council to help us prevent this needless loss. I do have a couple other additional questions I'd like to ask that have been floating around the community about this idea, and one is, can a private airport with AV zoning be used as a public storage facility? And who can approve plans without a detailed plan showing the details like exit doors and combined sleeping, with combined sleeping quarters along with airplane fuel and storage? This is a bad idea and should be denied. And in addition, if he wanted to start expanding out, he should have started off on the east side and get rid of his storage facilities and use them as hangars, and start building out on the east side like it originally was intended to have done. Keeping that free space on the east side, I said east, but I meant the west hangars, but if he keeps the east side of the airport free of hangars, that provides that open space that the FAA talks about as being such a critical safety factor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Lanfair, and I live at seventy-thirty Bennington Road. I have a list of bullet point questions that I still have that are continuously ongoing from when this began, and I would certainly hope that you have the same questions as I. In response to Mr. Ackerman just saying many airports are private, yes, they are. However, if we statistically look, how many of those private airports are the same idea and concept that he is proposing? Do those airports have bedrooms? Are they proposing situations as Mr. Ackerman is, is suggesting? Also, as he suggests, the FAA and NDOTA have worked with him extensively. Yes, we have seen some of those pieces of, of statements that he has had, but if the FAA and NDOTA are in support of him, then why don't they endorse the airport? That's my question. Section fifty-five dash one-oh-four, DR Developmental Reserve Districts, intent is to provide a transition zone to prevent premature development without adequate urban resources available. The NRD has specifically made a statement that the water pressure is inadequately low out by the airport, MUD has as well. Plus, we do not connect to any city water, it is totally well and septic. Any plan from the city as then how to, how they will handle big box hangars with planes, bedrooms, people sleeping there, and aviation fuel mix? There is no infrastructure in place by the airport. City planning has approved two additional neighborhoods from Keith Edquist across the street from the airport to add to the density problem. The airport was built in the nineteen-forties with the intent as a very small airport, what is now grown into a huge monstrosity of an idea. The airport is surrounded completely by residential development with a second safety strip sold by Mr. Edquist for housing, so the second strip for safety is now gone. Selling off the airport throughout the years has eroded it, pushed it further into the encroachment zones. Planning Department is the administrative agency that we as citizens look to as the main responsibility to enforce safety and enforce airport zoning requirements. Why, over the years, were violations allowed and now waived to support this airport concept that eroded years ago? What happened to the city planning master plan to provide residential acreage areas there? Why expand an eroded airport that the state and Fed do not endorse or do not put their stamp of approval on? They may have worked with them, but why, again, aren't they endorsing it? If the state and Fed will not administer the safety of the airport, will the city? Who's responsible for the safety of the airport and the community? Does anyone point out that the leisure pilots will be mixed in with the Epley flight pattern? We have many Epley flights that go right over the top of the North Omaha Airport. These leisure pilots are coming in, how are they going to interact? Mr. Ackerman states that he will, he will grow the flight activity to be larger than the Millard Airport. Please listen to the statistic. Millard has one hundred sixty-five acres with ample area for a margin of error, error for a plane to go down. The North Omaha Airport has thirty-six acres with homes already in violation of the safe landing zone, one which has a flashing light that the city provided as a waiver since the home was built in error. The light is not going to help a pilot who's going to be hitting the home, it's another distraction. If the nineteen-eighty-seven code is antiquated, please tell us. What in it is antiquated? We as well, as you, deserve an answer. Why were citizen tax dollars used to pay a survey company who has no aviation experience and called upon the FAA to answer any, my new questions? They have made a previous error when they were hired by the previous airport owner, Keith Edquist, and used for his consultation. None have aviation experience. This is truly a unique proposition put in front of you. Please take into consideration the safety of the surrounding neighbors without a master plan, as Dan has mentioned, that we have never seen as neighbors, that has, if, if you could have a master plan that has ample studies with facts, safety facts, safety studies as to how this will proceed, and also be sustainable. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm George Jones, owner of Crystal Beverage Mart, South Omaha, forty-eight oh-seven, South Twentieth. I too own a portion of the property of North Omaha Airport, along with a handful of others that have been there much longer than I have. My dad was in the Air Force for twenty-two and a half years, and I'd like to pursue my pilot's license. I also would like to have a return on my investment. After speaking with Mr. Ackerman, I received an agreement of what it would take to be able to use the North Omaha Airport, and although I'm not an opponent, I do have my concerns. I do think that several of us neighbors should be in communication with Mr. Ackerman and understand just what he's willing to do to compromise with us moving forward on how we can get a return on our investment. Like he had mentioned, he'd like to build several hangars. Well, there are hangars existing that have been there for a very long time, along with the neighbors that share the space with us. We own and share an easement of the, of the taxi strip where the planes land and come back on to go back into their hangar space. We too would like to rent our hangars. Under his agreement, he would not like to see us rent our hangar space, he would not like to see us provide mechanic, mechanics towards anyone that needs their planes worked on, he would not like to see us provide any fuel, basically limiting the rest of us neighbors and funneling all revenue towards his project. I would like better communication between the neighbors and Mr. Ackerman in moving forward on what his plans might have us incur as far as our expenses on what he requires from us, as far as his plans being accepted, because we have to make adjustments to our own properties. So that's why I'm here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lawrence Shackman, sixty-five fifteen Stone Throw Drive, Omaha. As a resident living near the North Omaha Airport, have many concerns related to the proposed revision to the airport zoning ordinances. After the planning board meeting of December sixth, twenty-twenty-three, in addition to follow-up meetings held by the planning board, I feel it's my responsibility to comment on several of the issues concerning the North Omaha Airport and revisions to sections fifty-five, six-ninety-two, and through seven-hundred.
I'm just gonna look that down for you. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. The airport zoning regulations modified in nineteen-eighty-seven, the grandfather in non-compliant structures, has been in effect for over thirty-five years. Now, the planning board is asking the city council to weaken the ordinance for the benefit of one individual while putting at risk the safety of the community surrounding. The present airport regulations state that the runway area zones have a width of one thousand feet symmetrically located along both sides of the center line of runway and extend two-hundred feet beyond the outermost landing threshold, departure limit, and departure threshold at each end of the runway. The height limit shall be the level of the runway center line restricting development in this area to prevent the possible death or destruction of property caused by a plane crash, if development was allowed in this area. The purpose of the airport zoning regulations is to protect the public safety of the people living near the airport. Otherwise, the airport zoning regulations match the FAA public airport regulations concerning safety from runways. The intent of the FAA regulations is to reduce the risk of pilot or aircraft damage caused to structures near the runway. The next point is that by having this restricted buffer area, in the event of a mechanical failure near the runway, the pilot may be able to land in an area free of structures without causing loss of life or destruction of property. Because the planning board has ignored the airport zoning regulations and allowed development in the restricted area, the City of Omaha City Council is now being asked to rewrite the airport zoning regulations. What the planning board is asking the city council is forgiveness, not permission. The purpose of the planning board is to enforce the City of Omaha zoning regulations and resolve ambiguous parts of the ordinance. The purpose of the planning board is not to help an individual business at the expense of the community. The city, the Omaha City Council has both a legal and a moral responsibility to ensure that the zoning regulations passed by the Omaha City Council are carried out to ensure public safety. Laws are created to protect the interests of the community, not at the expense of the community for the benefit of an individual purpose, person, or a business interest. The following statements are concerning the zoning. The fundamental principle of this chapter is to provide for zoning in which development is, is restricted. Code nineteen-eighty, section fifty-five, six-ninety-two, this chapter on the airport zoning has nothing to do with airplane landing or departing, but to restrict development from entering the restricted area around the North Omaha Airport. The purpose of these zoning requirements also details what can and can't be built on the North Omaha Airport after March fourth, nineteen-eighty-seven. I want to emphasize restricting development within the airport after nineteen-eighty-seven. A non-compliance house was built at twelve-five-thirty-five North Seventy-Second Street in two-thousand-and-twelve, which violates the airport encroachment areas as defined in paragraph A. Additional, several houses were built after two-thousand-and-twelve, and I've, I've listed them.
Not sure how to work this. Yeah, we can see it.
I can just read them off here. It's twelve-four-oh-four North Ninety-Sixth Street, twelve-three-fourteenth, nine, North Ninety-Sixth Street, sixty-eight-sixty-nine Willow Street, sixty-eight-sixty-six Willow Street, sixty-eight-sixty-five Willow Street, twelve-six-six-twenty-one North Seventy-Second Street, twelve-five-thirty-five North Seventy-Second Street, twelve-four-thirty-five North Seventy-Second The location of these houses is a potential safety risk issue, both to the people living in the homes, as well as the pilot or passengers in the plane. In my opinion, this act of negligence by the Omaha Planning Board allowed this home and houses to be built will result in possible lawsuits against the city for not following their own airport zoning ordinances. The City of Omaha created these zoning ordinances, and only the City of Omaha can change them. The recent owner of the North Omaha Airport should have known what the zoning restrictions, which prevent non-conformance development within the runway area zone prior to purchase the property. Now, the owner's requesting to the airport zoning ordinance from both the planning board and the City of Omaha to bail him out for a business decision that he made. The inaction by the planning board appeals is not, in not exercising their duty as stated in section seven-point-zero-nine of the city ordinance. The Board of Appeals should have the power, in passing upon appeals, to vary or modify the application of any of regulations or provisions of such ordinance related to use, construction, alteration of buildings or structures, or the use of land, so that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed, the public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice is done. The Planning Board of Appeals has not done their job concerning all the violations of the airport zoning, zoning ordinances that has been presented here today. The Omaha City Council has an important decision to make concerning these proposed changes to the airport zoning ordinances. Don't change the ordinances that have protected the residents living near Omaha for over thirty-five years, or change the airport zoning ordinance and put residents' safety and security at risk who happen to have the, live near the airport. Reducing the buffer of no development within the five-hundred feet of center line of the runway will allow more development in the buffer area, exposing the City of Omaha to negligent lawsuits in the event a plane goes down in the former buffer area.
Are you close on your remarks?
Okay.
Okay, I can summarize.
All righty. One last point, if the, does approve, the consequences of development of the restricted area for additional housing will overwhelm the existing infrastructure. The existing water line running along North Seventy-Second Street will not have the cap, capacity for fire suppression in the enlarged residential area and the North Omaha Airport. To new, to satisfy the new demand for water, the existing will have to be upgraded and replaced at the cost of water usage. The OPPD power lines that run east-west along North Northern Hills Drive will have to be buried because of the extension of the runway to the north. The cost of this modification should be the responsibility of the airport developer and not the residents. The one decision you, you make will have the impact on the lives of residents to the years to come.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Any other opponents today? Seen, go ahead.
Louis C. Menace, twenty-seven oh-nine Dewey Avenue. I wanted to comment on the health issue that was brought up, the safety issue. I don't think that's a concern for the planning department based on Nebraska statute. Nebraska statute identifies Omaha City Council as the authority for the health concerns for the City of Omaha. And you have also identified the health director as somebody that needs to be in the conversations when it comes to safety and health for the public. I, you know, I, I understand that we want excitement in Omaha, but I think that this is something that should be, you guys should be looking this with the safety concerns, and also asking your health director, who, who is the Douglas Health Director, about this. I don't think it's been presented to her, I think that'd be I think that'd be a good idea.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Cena, before I close public hearing, Pat, I'll give you the chance just to respond to anything briefly that you maybe didn't address that you heard, and then council members will move to questions. And a reminder that we do have the planning department here as well as a consultant on behalf of the city that can answer questions too.
Thank you. Pat Ackerman, one one nine oh one, North Seventy-Second Street. Just a couple of things I want to comment on here. There's a lot of complex language that was just used that's very confusing. Again, that's why we've relied on the consultants, the city, the FAA to analyze these things to give us a recommendation. And so again, those, those groups have looked at this and have given approval recommendation for compliance associated aviation zoning. I also wanted to make a comment that this diagram up here completely miscategorizes the airport, of North Omaha Airport. It's an A-one small aircraft airport, which has a width of two hundred and fifty feet. That's a thousand foot. So again, completely miscategorizes the status of the airport as a whole. And there was a comment about Epley flight patterns. We've navigated that successfully, easily within the flight community for eighty years. Again, there's no issue there with that. There was a comment made about growing the size or the number of aircraft there at the airport to larger than Miller-Epley. That is a false statement with the, with changes to the plan, which is to be private aviation, private hangars. So that was an incorrect statement. And again, the FAA has reviewed every one of the houses around there for compliance. There was only one that they wanted to have lit, but it was non-hazard to aviation. So any other claim of houses being in violation is an incorrect statement from the FAA. So, thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Ackerman, please come back up. Thanks. Good afternoon. I'll agree with you in your last comments. You said there's been a lot of complex issues with this. And you, you said there were some miscategorizations. I'm not going to address that, but as I've been reviewing this, and I want to first thank Eric England from City Planning, who took a lot of time on Friday, we walked through this. And you are correct in the complexities of this. There's NDOT, there's FAA, there's city planning. So when we get an issue on our agenda, if it's one of the seven of us, if it's an issue in that council member's district, usually what I do is call here, her, and say, hey, what's going on here? Just get a feel for it. I read the agenda. This one's three miles within the city, if I was, understand that correctly. Thank you, Mr. Fanslaw. So you actually have seven council members that are kind of, I'm not a pilot. I'm trying to understand the complexities that you said.
Sure.
So I got a ton of questions, but in order, in the sake of time, I want to try to distill them down. I want to simplify them. So this, I think if I remember correctly, this was sold by Mr. Edquist you in two thousand and twenty-one. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the items before us today on our agenda, it's my understanding there's no homeowners association up in that neighborhood. Is that correct?
I have no idea.
Okay. Second question is, have you talked to any of the neighbors up there and when? Have you had meetings with them?
Yep.
Because again, as you said, very complex. I don't live up there, but I'm learning from people that I met with Friday, Sunday, corresponded with, and phone calls and emails. So tell me about the outreach you did and the meetings you've had and when with the neighbors up there.
Sure, we did two public meetings back in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. I think it was two thousand and twenty-three, actually, where we had, I think the first one had eighty people in it. The next one had sixty-some odd people there. I have to look back at my notes specifically. Lot of questions about the airport concerns. Again, we made multiple modifications from the feedback that we got from those meetings and ultimately then fed into our ultimate approval that we, that we, or the ultimate proposal that we put forth today. I've met with significant amount of neighbors up in that area. Many of them are supportive of the project as a whole. They like smaller graph. They live around the airport for that reason, so.
And again, sorry, when was the last one you had with the neighbors?
It had been two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay.
Actually, let me correct that. It is two thousand and twenty-two. It was towards the end of two thousand and twenty-two because of, of the initial planning board meetings. We did two of those before the planning board meetings.
Okay, and there's been, if I remember correctly, there's been three planning board meetings with these items. Is that correct?
There was four in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, and then we had an additional one for the approvals that we got recently.
Okay, and that was a March sixth one that I, I did go back and watch on Friday. So there's no, you didn't know if there was an HOA. You had two meetings and the last one was a couple of years ago. It's my understanding from Mr. Edquist to you, there was multiple corrections that were in need of being completed. You touch on, and I wish I could have had the chance to meet with you as well, because you gave a lot of information there. I'm writing, I'm processing.
Sure.
I'm trying to understand it, so when, when you had those things that were in need of correction from two thousand and twenty-one that were put upon your plate, how many were there and how many have been fixed?
So in the FAA analysis that we did, there was, pull my notes again here real quick. So we did, so again, there's two hundred and ten airspace studies that we did. There were forty-eight concerns from the FAA. Sorry, fifty-two, fifty-two, and thirty-two of those have been corrected thus far.
Were those minor or major? Would you categorize them?
So there's, there's four different categories. Hazard to aviation, which is means there's a tree or a power pole that's in the way of the flight paths was an example. On Highway thirty-six, there were two Nebraska Department of Transportation light poles and a bunch of trees that were hazard to aviation. And those were removed here in the last couple of months and relocated to light poles. So that was an example as hazard aviation.
Where were those, if I can, where were those light poles at?
Just, just on Highway thirty-six, just south of the airport.
Okay.
On south of the airport.
Okay, because when I, when I drove around up the right, okay, that's good to know. And since you haven't had a meeting in the last couple of years, I'm just curious, and again, I haven't had the chance to talk to you today, before today, rather. How come you haven't had any meetings since that last time in two thousand and twenty-two? I mean, were you kind of, you were going to do what you got to do? And I mean, I was just curious to why that was.
Well, quite frankly, it was quite hostile. There was yelling, degrading during the meeting, and so I didn't really want to do another one. I spoke to a significant amount of neighbors during the time. We addressed most of the concerns with the new proposal, and I didn't like the hostility I was, I was given during the meeting, so.
Fair enough. Then if people wanted to communicate with you without having a meeting, could they email you?
Absolutely.
Did you respond to emails and phone calls from people?
I did, yep.
Okay. Question for you. It was mentioned the narrow width and the short length of the runways. Again, not an FAA expert. City Planning hires a consultant to help us, so.
Sure.
Help me understand that, the narrow width and the short length of the runways. What that, can you translate that? Is that a safety concern?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the wider the runway, the better for pilots. But again, usually the wider runway is for bigger airplanes. A lot of the airplanes flying out of there are single engines, smaller airplanes, and there's no issues getting in and out of there. Where the small, or the narrow runway comes in is everybody confusing the Nebraska Department of Transportation standards for the width of the runway, which is supposed to be fifty feet. Now, we were a public airport for twenty-plus years, and the Nebraska Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division had waived the width of the runway for over twenty years, and they only waived some of it if it's not a safety concern. And so again, I look at that as, as not an issue. We have tons of pilots. I fly out of there. It's not really an issue. And the length of the runway is definitely not an issue. It's almost thirty-two hundred feet, more than enough to accommodate small aircraft.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for, I think it probably be for Jen Taylor from City Law.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department.
Jen, good afternoon. Question, it was brought up in some of the conversations I had and also maybe today. Airport zoning ordinances, are there legal liability issues for the City of Omaha right now? Are there any violations of these right now? That's one of the things that I, I've been asked a couple of times. Is that a concern for the city?
As far as, are there current violations of the city's airport zoning code?
Is it air, and that's what I'm asking you. Is it, is it FAA or is it city zoning ordinances or airport zoning ordinances? Are there violations of that right now?
The city has a set of airport zoning regulations that are contained within the Omaha municipal code. It's my understanding from working with the planning department that those city regulations are actually more excessive than FAA regulations. They're more stringent.
The city ones are?
The city ones are. So we are actually requiring a greater deal of height requirements of things than the FAA does. Defer to Mr. Fanslaw, but I think that's accurate. So one of the things that we are looking to doing is harmonizing our code with the FAA.
And how long is that? Is that a process in months or years or what?
We'll undertake that as we undertake some of the other revisions to the zoning code that we're doing over the next year.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks, Jen. Mr. President, I think that's, for now, that's the questions I have, and I may have some follow-up in order to let others speak as well, so I might follow up later. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to ask, Mr. Fanslaw, could we have our consultant, the expert in aviation that we've had come up?
Sure, yeah. So, yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Eric England, the Assistant Director, has been handling the bulk of this case, and our consultant is present. They'll speak to your questions.
Oh, thank you. And Eric, maybe I'll have you start. Tell us how long we've had the consultant, why we have the consultant, and then you can introduce them.
Sure, Eric England, Planning Department. So I misspoke earlier. Actually, I didn't misspeak. This is Virgil Oleg Mueller with Lampre Neerson. Virgil originally had meetings planned with Offutt Air Force Base, but those were canceled, is my understanding. So rather than a member of his team that I thought was coming down, Virgil, who's been working with the city for, I'll let him answer that question, but I know that Virgil's name pops up in our old case files going back at least probably twenty years. So Virgil.
Virgil Oleg Mueller, one forty-seven, ten West Dodge. Here to answer any questions, but basically, I've been working with Omaha Airport Authority for over twenty-five years. Been all in aviation. I've been working with Corps of Engineers. We do obstruction surveys, just this exact same information that we're talking about today. And they have probably fifty different air force bases across the country. And then also have experience out at Offutt Air Force Base.
Okay, so you've worked with Epley. You said forty to fifty other. Is this what you've done for a living for the last twenty-plus years? I won't make you stay. Okay, twenty-five plus. There was some allegation that you didn't know anything about aviation. So I really wanted to know. The reason the planning department, you've worked with the City of Omaha then for anything aviation for that long or for how long?
Can you repeat that question?
Have you done work, how long have you done work for the City of Omaha as a consultant?
For this particular project? They brought me on board when the, when the applicant brought in the plans for the, so like two years, whenever that was, twenty, twenty-one.
But has Omaha used you before?
Oh, for, and then overall for the airport.
Correct.
I've been working with the airport, or for the City of Omaha, Omaha Airport Authority for over twenty-five years.
Okay, thank you. And I think we just bring you on project by project. You're not permanent.
Correct.
We don't pay you permanently because obviously these things don't come up that often.
That is correct, yes.
So we just bring you in when we need you.
So whenever there's a, whenever there's a new building, usually I work with the permitting. If there's a building, they'll have me look at the airspace issues. And I've been doing that for over twenty-five years.
And I, I also like to clarify, it, it kind, it probably sounds to the public like we're voting to pass an airport. This airport has existed for over forty years.
That is my understanding.
And it currently exists. It's currently operating.
That is my understanding, yep.
So we could vote no, but this airport will continue to operate.
Yes.
So that's, that's, we're not voting on the continuing operation of this airport. It has operated for forty years, and it's going to continue to operate whether we vote this up or down. It's just a matter of whether we're going to let the new owner make some improvements to the property and actually extend the runway. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So it appears that maybe over time, there have been some violations. It sounds like they've corrected a lot of them based upon the FAA.
Yeah, so the FAA, what they normally do is whenever there's any building, they'll do what's called seventy-four sixty, which the, the FAA is the experts in airspace, and they have the final determination on whether something's a hazard or not for, for, for the airspace. And the owner has submitted all those, and I think he said there was twenty-five-ish kind of concerns that they still had. And I did review those. The ones that were hazard were actually on the approach end, and that's kind of the critical area that the FAA will look at. So those were, my understanding, removed.
And will you work, and Eric, you might want to pop in. I know this is unusual, but in order to build any of the hangars, it'll be a separate permit application. And so if the owner then wants to build anything, the city will make sure that the rest of the concerns, I assume, are corrected before you'll issue the building permits. Is that right?
Sure, yeah, so Eric England, Planning Department. And before I answer that question, I just wanted to go back. The testimony in opposition was referring to the previous airport owner, Keith Edquist, had hired a different engineering firm. It wasn't in reference to Lampre Neerson. So I believe some of that commentary was referring to, you know, a different engineering firm. So as far as the new hangars and the proposal, obviously, the proposed improvements that the applicant had laid out in his presentation is basically what the major amendment is, and there's other zoning items. Cleaning up the zoning, making sure it's one base district, the plating to one entire platted lot. And then there's also a major amendment because this is located in the North Hills environmental overlay. So basically, all of the agenda items thirteen through seventeen are related to the proposed, you know, hangar buildings, the operation buildings, extension of the runway pavement. So we have conditions in place that prior to any building permit for those, they need kind of that additional review of the FAA that Virgil had mentioned. Now, it does get complicated when you have private versus public use airport because the FAA will only do so much review under a private use. And so, you know, Virgil can touch on that more, but we believe that the condition we have in place for the use permit is accounting for that.
Okay. And the airport existed before any of the homes, is that right?
I believe, and Pat probably knows this, the actual year better than I do, but I believe it dates back to maybe nineteen fifty. So we're talking, the airport's been in operation for eighty years.
And so anybody that purchased a home, purchased it with the airport open? I mean, they, they knew that the airport was there.
Yes, there might be a few homes that were there at that time. I'm not sure, but the vast majority, if you look at the historic aerials, the airport preceded those. And if I could just touch briefly on the platted neighborhoods of Northern Hills Estates. So there was a, a lot of commentary that the planning department approved all these homes in violation of our codes. Those went through the plating process and zoning process and would have been approved by city councils dating back fifteen to twenty years, and those followed the proper protocols.
Okay, so most of those, I noticed there was some pretty harsh language used against our, our planning department and the people that work in our planning department. And none of those approvals would have been made by anyone in this.
That is correct. We do not have the sole discretion to approve that. Those would have gone through Planning Board, City Council, through the normal plating process.
And I noticed, what I was concerned about is the waivers. And I looked, and please correct me if I'm misunderstanding the waivers, but it looks like they're actually waiving sidewalk requirements and planting street trees requirements. So those two waivers actually are to make, make it safer. I mean, there's no reason to have sidewalks, and you certainly probably don't want to add trees to the area. So those are the waivers that we're talking about.
There's two components of the waiver. So the waivers that you just mentioned are from chapter fifty-three subdivision code. And as is typical with the Northern Hills environmental overlay, we do support waivers of sidewalks. You oftentimes are dealing with difficult terrain. That's not the case for the airport, of course. It's, it's fairly flat. And then obviously, street trees does contradict the actual use. And so those are very easy, you know, and supportable and consistent, definitely with the sidewalks for other developments in the Northern Hills overlay. There is also a component within the special use permit that there are waivers that had to go to the zoning board of appeals at the February meeting. And those and those deal with the height of the hangars and because Omaha's zoning code is more restrictive as it deals with, you know, all the, there's like five different zones and I don't want to get into the, you know, complicated details, but the FAA basically has a transition, it's a runway and a transition zone. So, the FAA has a total of 250 feet in width where their transition, transition zone starts, let me throw up a, since I am discussing it, if I could, if you can flip to the overhead, I'll just look at the bottom of, of this example, so I know it's a little difficult to see, let me zoom in for a portion here. So, the FAA runway, so if this here is the actual paved runway, the FAA has a zone 125 feet from the center line of the runway. Omaha zoning code, for that same runway area zone, it goes out 500 feet, as I zoom out, for a total of 1,000 feet, whereas the FAA zone is 250 feet, Omaha zoning code is 1,000. At the edge of that zone, you have a transition zone. I'll zoom in on these numbers, sorry, I keep going the wrong way. The number is basically seven feet of horizontal distance for one foot of rise where you need to, you know, structures, no trees, no street poles should be within that zone. So, if you went out 70 feet, you shouldn't have anything that is taller than 10 feet. So, this is an example of, you know, a new hangar building and the location and that's with this diagram, it's getting into all of these details which we have confirmed with, you know, our consultant to make sure that it's meeting FAA standards. As it stands right now, obviously, it doesn't meet the Omaha zoning code and that's why we were supportive of the zoning board of appeals waivers for those new hangars and improvements, everything which complies with the FAA codes. As far as the zoning code update, I just talked to Virgil, we already have a contract in place. We will be proceeding in the very near future with updating the, the code and having engagement related to those efforts, so.
Okay, so the waiver, the waiver was just our code is, as Ms. Taylor suggested, we required 1,000 feet, but the FAA actually requires 125 feet.
250.
250 feet. And so, that's what the waiver was, was just it's following, and actually, it still has, it's still more than 250, it's just less than the 1,000. So, it's somewhere in between is what it looked like?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
What they're doing is, it's still greater?
I, I don't know the exact distance of what the hangars are, we'd have to, Pat would probably know better offhand, I could study this, but he could probably answer that.
But for, in order to do the permitting, you're gonna require that they follow the FAA regulations?
Yes.
And the FAA feet, 200?
That is correct, and that is what we support at the zoning board of appeals, is that distance, the height of those hangars, the distance, they need to be set back.
Okay, all right, and Virgil, would you agree that that's, and will you be, will you work with planning to make sure that the permitting and that they're following the FAA for purposes of proving those permits?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, what happens when they apply for the permits, at that time, I usually get a phone call or a package to, to review those. But just let me be clear though, I don't have final approval, the FAA will do their own study and the FAA's got final approval of it, I'll just do a courtesy review.
So, it goes through more than just our city planning, it will, anything that they do, even though they get FAA stuff, they'll approve it?
Yep.
Okay, that, that's very good to know.
The only, the only part of that is if it's private, then it gets to a little gray area where, whether they gotta go to the FAA for final approval, but.
But you can, you can actually, you could request it and make sure that all the FAA guidelines are followed?
That is correct, yep.
Okay, all right, I have nothing further, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for city planning.
Eric England, Planning Department.
Thank you. What specific economic, environmental and social impacts have been evaluated regarding the designation of this area as an aviation district? And how will the proposed plan address a potential, any potential concerns related to noise pollution, local traffic congestion and community displacement while ensuring sustainable growth and benefits to our residents and businesses?
Well, I don't believe that I could answer all of those questions, but I know that as part of our review of the special use permit, we look at the environmental impacts, there is commentary about the detention basin and treatment of stormwater, you know, and just how that impacts wildlife and making sure that best protocols are followed with that, with that regard. Obviously, it's not good to have standing water basin that can attract wildlife when you're at an airport, so I know that's one specific item that we looked at. Public Works and Douglas County Engineers Office would have provided comments as far as access to the facility. I don't believe that a full traffic study was required, but they did look at things such as access to and from the site.
And the social impacts?
You know, we, our review did not go to that extent, this is an existing operation that is in place and, you know, the proposals for new hangar buildings, you know, it didn't kick in any review on our part in that regard.
So, we didn't think it was necessary if we're gonna change the, change the zoning, we didn't think it was any reason to look at or evaluate the social impact?
There's only one small part on the north end of the runway that has different zoning, so the majority of the site is not being rezoned. Most of it is zoned AV, there's a small portion zoned DR in the north that is the only area that's being rezoned. So, that has one base district as required by the zoning code.
And the impact on the economy?
That is not something that Planning Department or other city departments looked at in our review.
Noise pollution?
I can't speak to that.
Traffic congestion?
I already addressed traffic.
Traffic would be Public Works, is that correct?
They were part of the review of the plans, both Douglas County Engineers Office and Public Works Department.
Okay. So, do you have any concerns or any information that you can provide regarding the benefits to the residents and the, and the business owners thereby? How this rezoning to a airport district will have, have any benefits to these two groups of people?
Well, it's been an airport for 80 years, it's continuing to be an airport, I guess I would leave it at that.
I would need someone in the Public Works Department to speak to the traffic congestion, if any, after your analysis. I assume you did some analysis on how this would impact that?
Bob Stube, Public Works, obviously, this airport's been there a long time, it's got a highway that's on the south side, it's got 72nd Street on the north side and my staff would not identify any issues associated with congestion in that area.
This question is for Mr. Ackerman, please.
Patrick Ackerman, 11911, North, North 72nd Street.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman, you mentioned that the FAA found about 50 or more concerns. You addressed 30 about. May I ask why the other 20 concerns perhaps were not addressed and if there is an intent to address those concerns?
Yep, the remaining of those are on neighboring properties that I have no control over, so those have been submitted for review by the city and their consultant for potential zoning enforcement on those, most of them are trees. So, there is a path and a plan to resolve the remaining of those with the help of the city.
So, we do have some recommendation to address some trees and things of that nature, how likely are we able to resolve those issues?
I would have to defer to Jen or Eric on those, but thus far, my interpretation is we have a path to getting those resolved.
Okay, and meaning Eric English on those?
Eric England, yes.
Yes. Mr. England, if you could address that, that concern, please.
Sure, Eric England, Planning Department. So, regarding the existing violations in place, just like with any other zoning code matter, we operate on a complaint basis. Up to this point, we have not received any complaints, we have obviously been in coordination. We would like all potential FAA, city of Omaha violations to be cleaned up and taken care of, of course. This is unique and challenging when you look at a zoning matter regarding a violation on a adjacent property. I don't think there's any other scenario that I can think of that would come up besides these airport zoning codes that you have, you know, for an example, a tree that has grown over the years on adjacent property that's reached a height and that encroaches into one of those zones. So, it is not an easy matter, we've had discussions, those discussions are ongoing. We do think the applicant has done a very good job of addressing the violations on property that he controls and maintains as well as working with Douglas County Engineers Office regarding trees in the right-of-way, working with OPPD on power poles and power lines, as well as the state of Nebraska on some of their infrastructure that Pat has discussed. So, those conversations are ongoing as far as the enforcement of Omaha violations on neighboring properties.
So, we do agree that FAA is the governing body that has the expertise to say what concerns should be applicable to an airport, airports surrounding district, what have you. We do agree that they do have the expertise and expertise to make those calls.
Absolutely, before we put together our recommendation report for the, the zoning board of appeals, recommendation from the city, we consulted with the FAA on making sure that their advice was being followed and while it's a private use airport, they can only go so, so far in the advice that they're given, but we were comfortable with the language. So, that's an example of, that we've been working with, but absolutely, we want to continue that dialogue with them and think that's very important.
They've already made a recommendation of 20 that we haven't addressed. So, how do we mitigate or how do we resolve or just help me understand your, your line of thinking as to why you feel that you can not address those 20 concerns when they are the experts? Help me understand that, there's a disconnect here somewhere, I don't know where it is.
No, there's, basically, the FAA does not do the full review because it is considered a private airport. While they can give guidance and suggestions and what their regulations would be if it was a public use airport, they are not going to come in and say you have to fix this and remedy. That is part of the problem and where we got with the previous airport owner is that, you know, whether it was, you know, intentional or not, there were a couple hundred of violations that basically lost him his public use airport status with the state of Nebraska, FAA, you can kind of group those two together. And so, when that happened, the previous airport owner lost funding as a result from the state of Nebraska. We believe it's the applicant's best interest, he has stated that he wants to get it back to a public use airport. But where we stand right now with private use, really, the only thing under review by Omaha is those violations as it relates to city of Omaha code and, you know, getting back that public use, making sure that they're taken care of at the FAA level as well. And I think it's gonna be more consistent when our codes do match up and that's why we identified the urgency to, to make sure that why does Omaha have some more strict zoning code dating back to 1987 when we have a entire federal branch of the government that deals with FAA, you know, aviation and, you know, why should we have different standards? So, we thought that's pretty clear and we're looking forward to making that change.
The FAA, I need more clarity on what the FAA, the 20 concerns that the FAA were concerned about, I need more substance to that because we've been somewhat vague. We talked a little bit about trees, but we really haven't discussed what concerns the FAA had. Again, they're the experts in the air and they had some concerns. And I'd like to know more about what those concerns were because to me, it would sound like they would be concerned with maybe signaling or something of that nature, the trees would be obstructing a signal or something. I mean, help me understand what their concerns were.
As far as the specific FAA violations, I would defer to the applicant to come up, he's gonna be in a better position to be able to, to identify what those are. We just had a conversation earlier, but, you know, I have hundreds of emails, probably 2,000 pages of documentation regarding this case over the past couple of years. The information is gonna be more readily brought up by the applicant.
I would feel a little bit more comfortable knowing what, why they were concerned and, and I haven't been, I'm not confident that I've received that information just yet. So, if you can add some more substance to that, I would appreciate it.
So, the large majority of the concerns were trees that have grown into the adjacent airspace, whether that's on the south or north end or adjacent in the transition zone of the airport itself. I believe that was over 60% of the concerns were trees growing into the airspace. We also had one light pole that was hazardous to aviation on the OPPD right-of-way that was two feet too tall and so, we're working with them right now, so that's an example. And then we had four, actually, two violations in Nebraska Department of Transportation, Highway 30 zone, which were two light poles that were hazardous to aviation, those have been resolved and moved and there were some additional trees that they removed as well. So, those are the hazards, quote unquote, that they had concerns with, it was trees, it was structures that they wanted to be lit, so they weren't hazardous, but they wanted those to be lighted for evening access and they were either utility poles or light poles, those are the categories they fell in within.
Did you just explain the 20 concerns that have not been addressed?
Correct, yep, so the OPPD light pole, there's a number of trees in the, in the right-of-way of Douglas County along 72nd Street, some trees to the north and the south end and the trees adjacent to the neighbors to the east of the airport are the main concerns from the FAA currently.
And, and can you help me understand why they were concerned about these trees?
Because they're growing into the transition space or the aviation zone, so if they grow too tall into them, they become potential hazards or obstructions to, to the pilots that are flying in and out of the airport.
So, there is a potential of unsafe condition in terms of driving into the, to the airfield and all of that, is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
And is there, is it your intention to address those 20 concerns?
Yes, and working with the city of Omaha, again, these 20 is, are on neighboring properties that I have no control over, so I have to work through the city of Omaha and their zoning code to work on enforcement because I have no enforcement capability on those, those 20.
So, how would we as city council members be abreast or kept informed about your progress, if any? How will that happen?
I'm happy to give a monthly or bimonthly report on where we are with them, again, we're actively talking with, with various, various groups. Again, we met with OPPD last week. We, we've met with some neighbors, though, some neighbors don't want to have those reserved, some opponents have stood up here today, have multiple violations on their property and they have been unwilling to resolve those. So, that is also an issue that we have at our hands, so.
So, if they refuse to have those trees removed or address those concerns, we will still have those concerns, so the pilots and the safetyness of the pilot as well as the surrounding area, should there be a crash, would still be at risk?
It could be, and that's where, again, I work with Eric and Jen Taylor, City of Omaha Law, because I have no enforcement capability, the only enforcement capability we have- because I have no enforcement capability. The only enforcement capability we have is through the City of Omaha zoning code and compliance.
So Bing, are you planning, or I know you said that perhaps you had some hostility in terms of connecting with the neighbors. Is, I mean, I mean, you got a business case here to address these concerns, especially as it relates to safety. And the City of Omaha prides itself on saying that safety is number one to its citizens. So I would think that you would want to do whatever you can to address those concerns.
I do. I'm happy. I've made the offer to remove them at my own cost. I've still been told, "No, don't touch my tree." So I stand here today, working with the city on those enforcements.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start with Eric and Virgil, please, if you wouldn't mind. And I think part of Ms. Johnson's questioning I wanted to pick up on because I think it's really important that we understand, and I'm not sure it's been said maybe enough or clearly enough, is what we're dealing with is a private use airport versus a public use airport. And there are very separate and distinct standards that have to be met for each of those. And if you could just maybe lay a little groundwork for that.
Virgil Lake Miller, 14710 West Dodge. Yeah, the, the main difference is the FAA controls public airports across the country. If it's a private airport, they just give guidance on, not just guidance on what they need to do at the private airports, but they don't have the enforcement on a private airport.
Okay. Thank you. Well summarized, Virgil. Thank you. So, and this used to be, at one point in time, a public use airport. But because of, I'll say, the previous operator, certain things fell by the wayside or certain things were not kind of up-kept or they just got to a point where the FAA took away the funding and the designation of a public use airport. And therefore, it began, it still maintained its airport status, but as a private use airport.
That's correct.
Okay. And I think it's very important that we also understand that certain standards that apply to, or maybe in this case, previously applied to the airport as a public use airport, if you will, kind of went away because it's now labeled a private use airport. And that the FAA, I think this is really important, the FAA gives guidance for private use airports rather than, rather than requirements. Because again, if they are, if they abide by those requirements, then they're, they're open to at least the possibility of some federal funding as it relates to a public use airport.
That's correct.
Okay. So bear with me because this might be a little disjointed because it's kind of very complicated and getting people up at the same time. And I've got notes all over the place. So currently, it's in operation as a private use airport. And that would not change, as Ms. Melton, I think, had in her line of questioning, that would not change tomorrow without any action that we're taking here today. Is that correct?
Eric England, Planning Department. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So any of the, any of the concerns or violations, guidance violations from the FAA that exist today, again, tomorrow, if nothing happens here today, tomorrow, it could still exist as a private use airport.
Yes.
Okay. And so those, those existing airspace violations still allow this operator or any other operator to use that as a private use airport, right?
That is correct.
So in what Mr. Ackerman is planning on adding to this airport with the hangars, those still, that doesn't change the status of the private use airport status?
Correct. That's correct.
So I think what we're really talking about is whether or not today is a private use airport or with these, with this request and approval of, we're really talking about, maybe it's a question of volume. Would that be kind of an accurate statement to make? Volume in the sense of maybe traffic in and out of.
I think the applicant, he believes that with new, new hangars available that customers can rent out and that could allow to an increase in volume, but I don't want to speak for the applicant. But just based on previous testimony at Planning Board, I think that would be accurate to say.
Maybe I didn't ask the question right way because what, I think what I'm trying to get at is with the addition of the hangars or the proposed hangars, that still does not change the status from private to public. And therefore, would open up further scrutiny or further regulations that would have to be abided by in order to be a public use airport.
That is correct. It would, new hangars would not change the status as it stands with a private use airport.
Okay. Sorry. Now I'm getting to the disjointed part. So one of the examples you used was the thousand-foot measurement. Is that, is that an FAA requirement for a public use airport? Or is that what's in our ordinances today, our municipal code today?
So I'll hand it over to Virgil. He's going to be more.
The thousand feet that we've been referring to, that's what's in the current city zoning.
Okay. And that's, what would it be for a public use airport in FAA standards?
Yeah. So there's different classifications of airports. And a thousand feet is for the largest airports and typically commercial airports, like, I mean, largest airports in the, in the country are, would be the thousand feet.
I just want to make sure we're applying the correct terminologies and standards to what we're talking about. And so in our current code, and that's one of the, and one of the reasons probably you suggest, you being the Planning Department, suggested going through the zoning board of appeals, is that to change the ordinance prior to that and maybe to do a comprehensive review of our ordinances, which were last done, I think, in 87, that's, that was the reason for, it wasn't trying to do any kind of end run. It was just a reason for taking it to zoning board of appeals because it really only dealt with one part of the municipal code for AV zoning.
That is correct. Yes. And there have been other zoning waivers in the past with previous owner and applicant, as well as the Northern Hills Estates, you know, largely because of that thousand-foot transition or runway areas.
Okay. And then again, back to some of Ms. Johnson's line of questioning too. So the, of the 52 concerns that were originally identified as guidelines to abide by or meet or try to achieve, about 30 were resolved, 22 remain, and there's some ongoing efforts to address those. And I think Mr. Shackman also brought something up about the utility poles, maybe, or the OPPD poles and bearing of the lines and the cost may be, I assume that that's going to be one of the things that's with the runway extension that I certainly would hope to see done. The cost of that should be on the developer, the owner, the applicant here. Would you agree with that?
Yeah. I don't know the exact locations of where those power lines are situated, but I know that he's been engaged with those, you know, that possibility with OPPD. If I could have, sir, if I could have the overhead turned on, I'll just show basically a snapshot. So Pat had mentioned the different categories as far as off, you know, hazardous to aviation, marked light structure, no hazard to aviation. So these are kind of a summary of what, you know, was provided to us here at the city by the applicant. And then we would take that information, the actual data files, which I'm not showing here. It's, you know, there's a lot of data that is in reference to these. That is part of what our consultant then would verify as, as far as locations of where these are. And so this is just a snapshot. This, you know, of course, doesn't show the location, but I just wanted to pull this up since I did locate it.
Yeah. If the, I keep harping on this, but again, it's a private use airport today. If the remaining 22 issues, guidelines are not resolved, it could still operate as a private use airport, correct?
That's correct.
I think, I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
I think most of my questions have been answered in the last few minutes of dialogue. I would have a couple, I would have a question for Eric England. Sorry. So Mr. Ackerman talked about, you know, the violations of trees possibly being in violation that's on land adjacent to his airport. I mean, what is the mechanism for us to force a neighbor to take a tree out of that airspace?
Eric England, Planning Department. Discussions on that matter are ongoing between the Planning Department and the Law Department. I don't think I am at a place to say the definitive plan moving forward on what that exact enforcement measure could look like.
Okay, I understand.
If I could just elaborate briefly, you know, these are criteria that are established in the zoning code. Obviously, state of Nebraska law does have a mechanism set up. If someone, if one of the neighbors wanted to seek a waiver of that from the zoning board of appeals, obviously, we would not be in support of that because of the potential, you know, safety hazard being within, encroaching within one of those zones. But, you know, there is always that avenue, but I'm not suggesting that, you know, we would not be supportive of those waivers in that situation.
Can you talk to me, Mr. Lamphier talked about encroachment of a couple of houses. And I'm sure that there were surveys done and all of that kind of work done during the final plating of those lots. Are they encroaching into the airport's land? Or are they, or does just the lot mine jockeys around that way?
The house doesn't encroach in the airport land. I mean, it is on a platted lot that, you know, that homeowner owns. Now, there is some question with one of the homes on the east side of the, of the airport that we were unable to verify if it was built in accordance with the building permit that was approved. So I know there's been some investigation. However, due to the length of time when that home was built, we do not have the best records available to us that we searched for. So I can't speak exactly to the specific criteria of that one home. I know, you know, there has been concern, but I believe that most of, if not all of the concerns from the FAA have been addressed with lighting on that structure. So I don't believe that there are any homes that are considered hazard to aviation, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. This might be a question for John. And would the, would Millard Airport be considered, or Virgil, I mean, would Millard Airport be considered a large airport at this point?
Virgil Lake Miller, 14710 West Dodge. There's all different types of classifications. Millard Airport would not be a large airport. That's more for the, the commercial type airports.
Okay. So was, was there any reasonable comparison between the two?
North Omaha Airport is, classification as a small airport, which is the smallest category. I don't, I can't answer exactly what Millard is, but I know it's larger than, than North Omaha Airport for classification.
Okay. And then maybe a question for Mr. Ackerman about the amount of air traffic. I'm not so concerned about the amount of cars and trucks that are driving on the adjacent highways. But what are you, do you anticipate for the amount of air traffic? Is there going to be significant change? Would you expect a significant change and what would that look like?
So in the original plan that we put together a year ago, the plan was for a significant increase for the amount of traffic because we were going to have people flying in, spending the night, the hotel, right? So that was the plan. With the revising of the plan to just being hangars, I would anticipate it to go up slightly, but not significantly by any means, so.
Okay. And then on the bedrooms or the, I don't know if you'd call them a bedroom, I guess you would, in the hangar, is that typical to have a bedroom with an airplane in, you know, adjacent, kind of like a chouse, if you will? I mean, back, I mean, the farm, you know, farmers put their tractors in their houses now. And is that typical or is that something that's unique to this project?
It's not unique by any means. There's a lot of air parks out there that have hangar homes, as they're called it. Arizona, Colorado, Florida, there's a lot of, Texas has them as well. And they're usually solved with fire readings between the hangar and the house itself and ventilation. So we've, we've investigated that and feel comfortable as we get into the building process to be able to address that.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's all I have for my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. This is definitely an unusual case. I know a number of us have been on the council for a period of time and some of us were on the planning board prior to that, and I don't recall ever encountering this particular issue. I think most of my questions were also already asked by other council members. And I think we do have a few more lights, but I wanted to follow up on just a couple of things to make sure I had clarity on that. I did meet with the applicant and also the neighbors. So maybe I'll start first with Mr. Ackerman, if you would. I think what Mr. Rowe was just asking was something I was interested in too. So about how many flights right now come in and out of North Omaha Airport?
Yeah, it's a couple a day, maybe mostly weekend flyers. I think takeoff and landings is somewhere in that three to four takeoff and landings a day. Again, some of the people that are living closer out there might get up more. But you get days like in April where it's super windy, you probably didn't have hardly any takeoffs and landings the entire month just because it's more of a recreational activity for people out there. So.
Okay. But you'd, in general, you'd say maybe three or four a day?
Sure. Yep.
And then should this be approved? What's your expectation in terms of what that would do in the future per day?
Maybe one or two. Again, mostly this is recreational. If we do get a business in there, maybe it would increase a little bit more, but I don't think you'd ever get more than 10. It's still, again, a small airport. It's mostly recreational. It's mostly for fun. So it'd be pretty minimal use.
So you think it might add a flight or two a day, maybe up to 10 per day, something like that?
Sure. Yep.
Okay. And then maybe this is a question for either Virgil or Eric. Maybe have both of you come up. On the, on the recommendation on the rezoning, there are some, a number of requirements there. And one of the requirements is something that was mentioned previously about obtaining a 7460 review from the FAA prior to submitting for a building permit. In other words, one has to do that or else you aren't getting a building permit, right?
Yeah. Eric England, Planning Department. Yes. Condition number one, we have language in there. Two, to safeguard in case the 7460 review can't actually be undertaken because of the private use. But yes, it is saying that FAA concurrence on the safety and in compliance with their regulations need to occur before some approval of building permits for the new hangar buildings or operation building.
So should that be approved today? There's still that final step that you control, which is a building permit.
Yes.
And then I think I understand the, a little bit, the vagary of the 7460 process you're describing since we are talking about private use, but it is our intention to request the FAA do that review, right?
That was, yes, that was part of the review was that these new proposed structures would go through the 7460 review process, which is done by the FAA.
And we would request that as a city, right?
Correct.
And then also a condition on there is that the violations identified be brought in, be brought into compliance. It says all existing airspace violations. So that's the 20 or so we're talking about and that's been mentioned, right?
Yeah. So this one is a little trickier. Obviously, we are wanting all the violations to come into compliance. But obviously, it has continued to operate with, you know, I would say FAA violations. And then there's also the zoning code violations. We ultimately have the control. We ultimately have the control of the zoning code violations if there is a complaint for us to proceed with that. Up to this point, there has not been an official complaint, just how we treat our typical code enforcement program. And so, this is a little, little trickier, I guess. FAA and N dot violations need to be brought into compliance if the state is granting them public use airport, but that is a little bit out of our, that's out of our realm, obviously, where a partner won't be involved with those conversations. So, perhaps that condition maybe should have been a little bit more clear as far differentiating between, you know, these aviation violations and the zoning code aviation violations is how I would summarize it, but.
So, which are, what are you referring to in that requirement then, to be specific?
I'm sorry, say that again?
So, then, out of that, are you referring then to zoning code violations or airspace violations on that condition?
Well, the way that it's stated, it's talking about FAA and N dot violations. However, you know, if he never proceeds with public use status, I would say that condition possibly would not be applicable.
Okay. But, I think what you're also saying is the violations we're talking about do have to get corrected, corrected by a zoning code?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the mechanism?
Yes.
All right. And then a few questions about development too around there. So, there is concern about Northern Hills Estates, and I understand that concern. That's pretty close to their field. Mr. Rowe did address that house that was maybe the most in question there, and I understand the answer you gave. How about additional development there? There is additional development propositions, I think, to the north and to the northeast that are coming through the process. Those don't cause you a concern in this regard?
No, there's currently proposed subdivision of property just off the picture. If I could have the overhead up. Okay, so this is the northern half of the airport property. We have, kind of in this vicinity, there is one, potentially two sites that are proposing subdivision into acreage lots. Those are still going through the entitlement process and have not yet, I'm sorry, I can't remember if one of them ever came to city council for the preliminary plat, which would have been directly north further. I know the one to the northeast has not yet received approval from the planning board, but that could happen in the next month or two. We do have language and conditions, making sure that any aviation guidelines are being followed.
Okay. And same across the street? I know there's thought about developing across the street near Lonergan Lake?
Yeah, so these parcel lines that, this is an old image that is no longer what is representative. Just off of the screen to the west, you do have Lonergan Lake. There were, I believe, somewhere about 18 or 20 home sites in platted lots that were approved by city council, and so there will be construction that falls off in grade. Those are not of any concern as it stands regarding to the aviation or the airport operation. This area here is, was platted into an outlot that is being preserved for potential, you know, development with standard densities if the sewer system is ever extended to this area. Basically, 72nd Street on the east side, the master plan says that you wouldn't have your standard densities because the area is not to be sewed. However, on the west side of 72nd Street, that changes and could be sewed at some point. But this area is currently being preserved in a zoning tool. If you recall with that project, it was called an ag cluster, and so this area is within an outlot. Now, we will have to continue to keep an eye on their trees and some berming that was built up on the west side of 72nd Street. So, that would be the most concern as it relates to the aviation. But at this time, there would be nothing on the west side that would be of any concern other than that.
Okay. Any of my last questions for Virgil, with your expertise and review of, it sounds like many, many airports, public and private over the years, are you satisfied in your judgment that this is a, would be a safe, safely run operation with the conditions specified here, or should it be approved?
Yeah, the first thing that I always look at is how does it meet the FAA requirements? And what the applicant is providing is that meets everything that, that the FAA would require for, for building on, on an airport.
Okay.
So, the answer is yes.
That's a yes, okay. Thank you. And then, Mr. Lamp here, I know you wanted to, you're recognized one more time for some remarks here, the podium's yours.
I'll just pull it from the drive. Hang on, where, where's that at on here? Is that this E drive?
Yep.
Okay. Excuse me, folks, just give me a couple of seconds here. Might take me a few times just to get through some of these. Sorry, I thought I had this lined up and ready to go. Gosh darn it.
It's all right if you just want to explain them verbally to...
Oh, I'm sorry. What I have here is, I have a, a copy of the FAA documents that specifically address some of the violations that were, well, it's not the one I want.
Why don't we do this? Take, take your time.
Okay.
Do you have it?
Um... I think this may, well, I, I had one that, well, we're talking about here.
Is this it?
Let me see. No.
No.
So, I think this is one that we were talking about here. So, this is a study that Pat had done, and if I can highlight these areas here, what he's mentioned is there's one house, and that's not true. There are three houses and impact existing public use airport and exceed the transitional space at this airport. And if you, one of them had a clear narrative on it, that there are actually three houses, but here are the heights that they were exceeded by, and that's, there weren't one house, there wasn't one house, there were three houses that violate the transition zone. The same transition zone that he's talking about, the trees need to come down for. So, if the trees need to come down because of violations of transition zone, what, what are they going to do with the houses that are violating the transition zone? And how are those going to be addressed? And, you know, I, I did speak with the FAA, I did have a conversation with them. I'm a pilot. I rehearsed in how to talk with them and how to speak with them and know the language, and by the way, it's not a small airport, it's called a utilitarian airport. That's the correct verbiage. And in here also, they stated to me that this was a concern that they had and that there was no way that this airport would ever be able to go forward as a private use airport, as a pub, as a public use airport unless they in fact bulldoze down three houses, and that those houses are critical and, and safety problems, and that Pat Ackerman had asked them to modify their reports so that they called it pulling shenanigans and labeling some as, as, like he, he's labeled the trees as high category or, or a hazard to aviation. Well, houses, I, I've never met a house that I wanted to hit with an airplane, but I think they all are about as hazardous as any tree that I can think of. So, that's the part of the shenanigans that were played when they were asked to make this survey up, and the people that did the survey have since then told us that they have negated the, the study that was performed because Pat never failed, he failed to address the issues that, that they had a timeline to address the violations and see what he was going to go about doing them. And since he did not do that, they would not go through the process of doing another evaluation because it was a waste of their time, and that there were other airports, public use airports, that needed their services. So, as far as the 7460 requests, they will, they told me they will not do that, and I talked to the manager in charge of the FAA that does the airport designs.
Okay.
So, in addition, I do have, I think I can find this relatively easy. That's not it. Oh, yeah, okay, perfect. Well, this, that's the one, that's the one, but there's also a, a slide in here I needed to represent. Let me go back up here.
I'll let you find that, so, you know, take your time, but I'm going to move on to another council member with questions in the meantime. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. This question is for Eric. I understand that this area will be used for private and not public. I'm clear as mud with that. I don't, I don't need any more definition there. So, let's, let's get that out of the way. So, why are we changing the zoning here? What is the benefit of us changing it because we went to the FAA and got their opinion? If it has no merit, has no value, they were just advising, it had, I mean, what's, if they're just advising, then we're just going to take what they say on, on some of the issues that they are recommending that we fix because they're concerned about it, and then others were not? I mean, safety is safety, and whether it's, 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 it's Epley Airfield or a mom and pop airfield, I mean, safety is safety. And the FAA, that's their responsibility is to identify safety for us. If you did not want their opinion, then why did we seek it? And why are we changing the, the zoning for this area?
Eric England, Planning Department. Approximately the northern 25%, roughly, the northern 25% of the, the land that is owned and operated by the North Omaha Airport, so Pat Ackerman currently, is Zone DR Development Reserve. The remainder of the portion, or the remainder of the property is Zoned AV Aviation, okay? So, the only zoning change per se is to consolidate that area on the northern part of land they own and currently operate as the airport. The site has split zoning. So, the zoning code requires one base district. Obviously, it has to be under aviation, that is the only zoning code that allows aviation operation. Section 55 dash 546 for site development regulations in the aviation district says "Use of each site for aviation facility shall be subject to a special use permit approved by the city council as provided by section 55 dash 884." That section is referenced to a special use permit. So, basically, changes and improvements to an, to a area that, you know, operates for aviation services requires the special use permit. So, that is why we're here. That's what it comes down to. The applicant made a, a proposal. We are just processing it just like we would in every other zoning case or situation. So, that's what it boils down to. This is the process to bring it to this body for the approval of the improvements.
And with that being said, that's why we got FAA involved?
We have sought out FAA opinions and thoughts on the matter a few times throughout, but we are applying our zoning code regulations to the, to the, the site and to the project. The FAA is not a partner, they're not an applicant. There has been coordination, of course, but, you know, outside of that communication, I can't speak to, to what the applicant and how many conversations he's had with them, but for us and our consultants here at the city, we touch base on the improvements and make sure that there is no concerns on their end, and that's the extent of it.
So, for me, it would have been much easier if we had not consulted the FAA because now we have the FAA saying that there is 55 concerns, and we're only dealing with 30, and we're trying to change the zoning. I mean, why not leave things the way they are?
These violations were not brought to our attention based on this, submitted this application. These are violations that have dated back to the previous owner.
But we're, and we know that there's been some issues, some concerns with violations at this location, and so to me, it sounds like we're just compounding the problem by changing the designation and how we use the space.
The new improvements don't create new violations.
Then, okay, I, I'm going to find it difficult for me to support this because I'm, I'm just can't...
That's fine, this isn't my project, okay? This isn't the city's project. We are here representing and answering questions as it relates to the zoning code, plating, rezoning, special use permit process. So, I don't know why you think I am up here as the applicant, so that's where I stand.
Oh, excuse me, I, I know what you're up here for. I'm not, I'm, I, I have a full deck here. I understand why you're here. I understand it. I still have problems with voting for this.
And that's your right.
Based upon, based upon safety issues
Okay.
That have been demonstrated here today.
Okay.
And we're just compounding the problem here when we already know that there's been some issues and concerns regarding safety. Yes, I know you don't have anything to do with it, I'm just sharing information, that's how people exchange thoughts and ideas.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Were you prepared to finish your remarks, Mr. Lamp here, just briefly?
Yes, I'm sorry. I want to go back to what I had here, and here is a document that I, I found all the stuff, I was looking at the wrong location, I apologize. This is the Nebraska Department of Transportation Division of Aeronautics Airport Inspection Summary conducted for Keith Edquist right before Pat Ackerman bought this airport. And if you note, there are, it highlights here, there are also buildings on airport structures and off airport structures, private residences that violate the transition zone. That is the airport transition zone, the same transition zone that Pat Ackerman is concerned about as taking down trees to support him. Further on down the line, it specifically points out the homes and addresses, one funny thing in here I found was the home that was under construction here was, note, if you can see this, I don't know if I can blow it up any further for you folks to see?
I think we can see it fine.
Okay. There are, the transition zone hits below the roof line at 6.75 feet, and this is not my chart, this is not, this is the Nebraska Department of Transportation that conducted this, and if you look in one of the notations that they had on the side, a survey done by Lamp and Reherson that showed the house would not cause any violations. I find that very interesting, and I, so interesting that I did call the Nebraska Department of Transportation and talk to the person who did this study, and he did tell me that they had, they did not fully understand Nebraska transition zones and had to educate them a little bit on doing, on how that works. So... So I, I don't know that our expert has provided the best advice for, uh, our city in, in offering that solution. Another thing here, while I've got this, I do have that one piece that, oops, that's not the right one. Darn it.
I'll address one more thing, then I do have two more council members with questions, so.
You bet. I think I'm back to where I was before. But anyway, it, it, it does, I do have the document that points out that three homes and the, and the, uh, that they do violate the transition don't approve, and that was verified by the FAA subsequent to the Nebraska Department of Transportation. So both of them validated that there are structures in violation of this, uh, airport, much more than the, uh, specific trees that are mentioned. In addition, I wanted to also add that he's had two years to address any of these concerns that are on this list and it failed to address the major, the major costly ones are the most important, critical infrastructure pieces, meaning the width of the runway, the runway lighting, and you can go on down the list. The list provided, I can provide the list for you folks if you would like. But, uh, there are critical pieces in here that he's just failed to do. I mean, even if he says he's chopped down trees, well, he's chopping down, but he's left them alongside of my, on the border of my house and they're sitting there for the last year piled up in bushes. So his, his efforts and mine are quite different.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hugge, you're recognized.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Jones, could I ask you one, please? Eric, we may need your help to pull up a, a map of the airport.
George Jones, Crystal Beverage Mart, 4807 South 20th Street.
Mr. Jones, you said something in your previous comments that kind of piqued my interest and that word was easement. And I'd like to understand, um, where that easement is and how it impacts the airport.
So if I'm looking at this right, here is the runway strip. And this dotted line is the taxi strip. Now, Mr. Ackerman owns the property here in the front and the runway strip, but these properties here are his neighbors that share the airport with him, that also own the property to the airport, which are most likely the 20 violations he's currently still waiting on. And my issue is the lack of communication between him and the neighbors and myself and where the expenses are going to be as far as us cutting down our trees or us providing a fence to be in compliance with what he needs to have his airport and his reservations to allow us to continue to use the airport that they have, these properties and property owners have been using the airport, uh, since the beginning. And so, you know, as far as all these other concerns, as far as the development going in or some of the existing residential neighbors, all these people knew that this was an airport for 80 years, just like Mrs. Melton had explained. And any future development should know, that's where you're putting your development, next to an approved airport. Any of these residents that now are expressing concerns should know, you've lived next to an airport for several years. So all Mr. Ackerman is trying to do is improve the airport. It's how he's choosing to do it and not including the immediate neighbors on the airport as property owners to the airport is where my concerns are. I would be happy to address some of the violations that we're talking about here today, but after a negotiation has taken place on how the existing neighbors immediate to the airport are going to coexist with Mr. Ackerman's plans moving forward.
So could you indicate to me approximately where the properties that you own, please?
Yes, it is in this area here.
Okay. And, and by virtue of owning that property, you have an easement, excuse me.
Yes, the taxi strip and 15 feet on each side of that taxi strip, along with the other property owners neighboring me.
So the adjacent property owners have an easement on the airstrip?
Yes.
And that gives you access to the airstrip?
It should, yes, but there is a discrepancy in the understanding of that, and that's what I'd like to speak with Mr. Ackerman further because he has emailed me an agreement beneficial to what he would like to dictate.
Okay, and this easement is recorded in the Douglas County Registered Ease?
Absolutely.
Okay. How long have you had that easement?
Since the beginning of the airport has that easement been there. I purchased the property about a year ago.
Is your understanding that the airport go, dates back to the 40s?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to say? Because I'm going to ask Pat to come up and address your concerns.
No, just that, uh, you know, I think that this project is doable, but with a little more time spent on communication with the neighbors and like the community that is, uh, to the right of this airport here or to the east of the airport here, those are, those are, that's an aviation community. Some of those hangers to the back of those houses have access to the airport. That neighborhood going in was built by the existing airport owner. So therefore, the neighborhood itself is for aviation.
So there, there are, there are residents on the east side of the property that have hangers basically in their backyard?
That have access to the airport specifically purchased to be a part of aviation. Yes.
Okay. And do, and do they have easements as well?
Uh, who?
The neighbors, uh, the property owners on the east side, do they have easements?
Uh, the resident, the newer development, the housing, yes, they have easements, just a few, not all, to the airport. Then myself and the neighbors with me on the west side of the airport have always had access to the airport.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, there's nothing else you, you want to say or questions you have? I'm going to call Pat up.
No, thank you for your time.
We don't mean to put you on trial here today, but.
Sure.
Um, you heard Mr. Jones' concerns, um, in statements. Do, do, do you care to address any of that today? You don't have to, but if you want to, I'll, I'll allow it.
Sure. So as a private airport, I need to be making sure I have agreements with those that are using the airport. There is no easement as described. You can look it up on Douglas County of Deeds, that easement is for the, for the use of the airport, the owner of the airport to use the taxiway on that property. So if you look that up on Douglas County of Deeds, it's not to the benefit of that property owner or those property owners, it's to the benefit of the airport to use the taxiway that exists there today. So I just wanted to correct that statement. And as a private property owner of the airport, and I need to make sure everybody's in compliance with, the document I sent to them was, was a version of the FAA through the fence agreement, is what it's called, to make sure people are in compliance of what would be considered traditional aviation standards.
And how do you see those property owners on the west side of the landing strip and the taxi strip? How do you see those properties playing into your proposal?
Well, I hope to continue to improve their properties. I guess would be the gap, the hope, right? A lot of those properties on the west side have been dilapidated to some degree, so hope to see some level of investment to continue to improve the, the property. If we get the right agreements in place, I'm happy to, to make sure that the compliance of the airport and the airport facility is in compliance, then happy to use the airport.
Do you have a copy of the easement?
I, I could look it up online, it's on Douglas County of Deeds, but the easement that exists is for the airport owner, not the owner of that property. I don't have it on me right now.
Can, can, can you see any way that Mr. Jones, you're, you're implying Mr. Jones is incorrect?
I am, yes.
Can you see any way that there may be a misunderstanding on this?
There always could be a misunderstanding, sure.
Okay, because Mr. Jones has indicated he's owned that property, uh, for an extended period of time. And I just find it a little difficult to understand that if he believes he has an easement and he's owned it for an extended period of time, that he would be wrong. And, but, you know, also recognize that you're an intelligent individual. If you're sitting here telling me there's no easement, I, I just kind of fail to understand where that miscommunication could be.
Sure. So, I mean, again, that, the properties on west, on the west side have been developed or three different plats over the years and they've been moved multiple different times. Some have easements, some don't have easements, but the easements that exist are for the owner of the airport to use the taxiway, not in benefit of those that own those properties. So, and again, I'm happy to email you the, the easements on file for that specific property if it's helpful.
Okay, well, I'm going to call Mr. Jones back up if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
George Jones, 4807 South 20th Street.
Okay, Mr. Jones, I, I, I don't remember everything you said for your previous comment earlier, but you indicated that this property has been in your family for a while?
I, I just purchased it about a year ago. A close friend of mine, John Woden, had owned it and before him, I believe, it, I'm not sure of the last name, but Kent owned it before that and he owned it for several years. All the property owners that I've talked about on the west side of the taxi strip there have had access to the airport and have used that easement for several years before Pat Ackerman purchased the airport.
Okay. And your property's on the west side?
Yes.
Okay. And how did you come to understand that there was an easement?
Uh, from the previous owner, John Woden, who had used the airport prior to myself.
Okay, and when you acquired the property, you were provided a copy of that easement?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lamphier, do you have?
I do have an easement as well. It's sort of, Mark up here, Mark Farrell has an easement as well.
I'm sorry, you, I, I'm sorry, I'm new. I, I deviate from the rules.
I apologize.
Finished to?
I, I said, my, I have an easement myself that I obtained from Keith Edquist when I bought property up there. And so does Mark Farrell has an easement for his air, for his property as well. Uh, and so does the other Mark up there, I believe. Uh, so there are several that have, and those, pardon me?
And those were all property owners on the east side of the property?
Yes, I have, I have an easement through, uh, lots seven and eight, uh, to the runway. And I, I told, I gave Pat a copy that he knows darn well that's not the case, that it's an easement to the runway, just as.
Mr. Farrell, I believe, has got an easement, uh, to use the runway and use every, he put in a more exclusive easement that is more inclusive than I put in there, but, uh, the wording shouldn't be.
Okay, just, just to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly, when you say an easement to the airstrip, i- is it access to the airstrip or is it access to use the airstrip?
It is access to the airstrip is in, in, in use.
Okay, so.
At least that was Keith Edquist granted.
That you have an easement to use of the airstrip?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Lamphier. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I just, a couple of quick things. Wanted to make sure, I know Kathy Lamphier had some questions, uh, that I wanted to make sure got addressed. Most of them, I think, have. Um, one of the things, um, that, uh, that I want to make sure, I'm going to ask Mr. Ackerman at the end, but, um, I think she asked too about or made some reference to storing of gas. Um, I think that's, I think, um, I'll have Virgil and Eric, if you wouldn't mind, uh, answer some of these questions. Um, I, I believe that's, is, can you address the, the storage of, of aviation fuel as it exists today or as it would, would change or not change with, uh, with this plan?
Eric England, Omaha Planning Department. I don't think it would be in my expertise to specifically answer that question, but I will point out a few things related to that. Um, one of our conditions, sorry, get to the right page here. Uh, condition number five of the major amendment to the special use permit for the aviation services, um, specifically speaks that these space, spaces basically should not be converted to permanent residential dwelling units. Okay, so we have that specific criteria. Yes, if somebody flies in at night and you stay overnight, that is not considered a permanent dwelling unit. It also talks about that these should not be rented out for events and things like that. As part of the building permit process, you know, our building officials quite possibly would need to look into, you know, storage of aviation fuel in the proximity and what those appropriate fire rating separations or requirements could be. I don't know if Virgil has anything else to add.
Virgil Ignar, 14710 West Dodge. Yeah, anytime you got fuel, jet fuel, aviation fuel, it's, it's separated and there'll be a permit process for them to go through the city of Omaha to, to meet those requirements.
Okay. So the, they could, the answer is they could if they go through the proper permitting, have the proper, okay. And I apologize, Kathy, I think that was one of Dan's questions, not yours, but, um, uh, actually, so, um, I, I wanted to bring something up too. When, when someone was asking earlier, comparing Millard and, um, and this, I, I think it, again, I, I keep going back to this. Millard, I believe, is, is classified as a public use airport and not a private use airport, so.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was on the record. Uh, thank you. And then, uh, Mr. Ackerman, if you would come up, please? I know this is one of the questions that I've been asked by a lot of people, so I'm going to ask you for the record. Do you have any intentions of turning this into a public use airport?
I do, I hope so. That would be my goal. Because if I can get these violations under control, I can reapply back to the state. I've talked to the state multiple times about doing that. My goal would be to do that, but I'm limited on my ability to do that without the city's help in enforcing the zoning compliance.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's it. And then one last thing, uh, people, some people had some questions about, um, development. This is actually, uh, the intersection of 72nd and Bennington Road, I believe, is a Community 60. Um, so just, so it's, that's a, it's a fairly large area, so there's the potential for development, uh, both residential and commercial at that intersection is, is substantial. I was going to make the joke about we could even have two restaurants there, but that's in reference to last week, but, anyway, lastly, um, I know we, we do this on other, uh, we've done this on others, but on the special use permit, depending on where this goes, um, if there's a, a motion to approve, um, I, I think we should certainly consider an amendment that this would only apply to the current owner or affiliates. And also remind that the, that we have the ability to have show cause hearings if we think there are violations to the special use permit. So I'll just float that one out there, depending on what, what happens with the motion or not.
Okay, thank you. Um, and this, as a procedural reminder, we've, we've taken 13 through 17 as a public, one public hearing, but if that is the desire to amend a special use permit per se, we should take items separately to allow that to occur. There are no further lights at the moment.
Well, I mean, I, I think that's a great idea. I think that should be added. If you're not going to make the motion, I'll make the motion to amend, I would like to make, I'll do it for 16 and 17, they'd have to be separate motions, though I believe at that rate, Mr. Kuzey.
Matt Kuzey Law Department, yes, there'd have to be a separate amendment for 16 and for 17 since they are both special use permits and both the clerk and I would need to know the specific language of the amendment to be inserted since it's being done from the floor.
The specific motion would be that this shall, um, only apply, or could I have some reference because I know we did it just last week.
I think what I'll do is.
Councilman Festerson had an amendment for something we were doing last week where it just applied to the current owner, and that's the language I want.
I will look at last week's agenda and pull up that item. I believe that was for the group living home in the country club area. So I'll just need a moment.
In essence, it would apply to the applicant, not the property.
Matt Kuzey Law Department, I've located the amendment from. Matt Kuzi Law Department, I've located the amendment from last week, um, from Council President Festerson on that particular item. It would say, "Compliance with the submitted operations plan, which will include," oh, no, not that one, excuse me, "as provided for in section fifty-five dash eight-eight four, this use permit shall be specific to this applicant only and shall not run with the land." I'm gonna turn to Ms. Hosing.
I got it.
That, that would be, that, I would make a motion to amend sixteen with that language, that it shall only apply to this applicant and not with the land.
Do you have that kind of rule?
That exact language that Mr. Kuzi just read.
That is, that is the motion on, on the ta, on the floor, is there a second? We may.
All thirteen through seventeen were on, so I was just doing the.
Thirteen through fifteen need to be, can be held together, or voted on together, or the other two need to be taken separately.
Yeah.
Six, well, I was gonna do sixteen, yeah, but I have to make the motion separate, so I have to do a motion just for sixteen right now.
Madam Clerk, to, to do that, do we need to take thirteen through fifteen first, or does there need to be some procedural?
Yes, let's take thirteen through fifteen first.
Sounds like that is required. Is there a motion on those? Do you have a light on? Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
What's going on? So, before, I guess, before anyone makes a motion, since we're still discussing, I would tell you, um, quite frankly, up until the last answer I got, I was, uh, I was gonna vote for this. And I think, in my discussions with the neighbors, um, in my discussions with, um, others, I was always under the impression that this would be a private use airport, and I made a great point, I, not great, I didn't make a great point about it. I was going to great lengths to make the point that this, there is a difference between a private use airport and a public use airport, and I thought that a pub, a private use airport in this area, as it's been operated in the past, should be in the future. I was fine with that. I am not fine with this eventually wanting to be a public use airport, so I will not be supporting.
Okay, Mr. Rowe?
Ask Mr. Ackerman, uh, to clarify that, um, answer as well. If you could come up, I just, yeah, 'cause I had, I've been under the, under the impression all, all the last couple of weeks, that, you know, having seen this, that it, that the intent was to be private. So, what benefit to you, what is the benefit to you to go public versus private?
And, and I probably should clarify, again, the goal's always been to achieve public use criteria, right? I've told Eric all along, I don't know if we could ever get there, but if you, if you, if you complete the criteria for public use, then you, um, are in compliance with everything around there, right? I don't think we, I don't necessarily know if we can ever become public use again, right? We're a private use airport today, we'll continue to be there for now, if we can get some of the violations cleaned up. Um, if, if the council believes that it should always be a private use airport, I've always thought everybody was pushing me to be public use, and maybe that's not what I, I was coming to understand from everybody. So, if the requirement is to continue to be private use, I'm okay with that. Um, it's just, uh, that was not my understanding for everybody's desire, I guess, so. Is that helpful clarification?
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't know how the mechanics should work, but I'd like to somehow, uh, be sure that we attach some sort of agreement that it is a private airport. I think that's true, I, I don't understand the, the benefit of, whether it be economic or what.
It's not.
To you to go to public, and it just, it does make me feel a little bit better, knowing that it's operated in a way for eighty years, and then it's gonna change. If it's gonna stay the same, I was more inclined to, to be in agreement.
And I'm fine with the condition of staying private use.
Eric, are you okay with that?
Eric England, Planning Department, this airport was a public use airport until 2021. I don't know when it first started with that status, but what you are talking about, public and private use, is a state criteria, okay? Our zoning code allows for both private and public use airports, okay? So, it states that, I can find that section and read, but the specific public use that you're referring to, I believe, is a state designation and criteria. I just want to make sure that that's clear, and that this airport was a public use airport in the past. So, I just wanted to make it clear.
I don't know if you can answer the question, but what is the benefit, I'm having a hard time understanding, what is the benefit of going back to being a public airport? Whose benefit, who benefits from having a public airport be in that?
And the applicant can, could absolutely elaborate, or perhaps our consultant, I do know that as a public use airport, you do have funding available through the state of Nebraska or through FAA for operations such as like runway improvements and things like that. Um, I think there's specific criteria of what that funding can be used for, but I know that, that is, that is one criteria that I've been told, or benefit, I guess, of the public use.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you, I suppose we could add that, I, I was gonna kind of ask that question. I don't think, whether it be a public use or a private use, it doesn't change the amount of planes that can go through. I don't think it changes really anything, other than, if you're a public use, you're held to higher standards, higher safety standards, 'cause the FAA actually does regulate you. I guess, in my opinion, I would rather see it be a public use and be under the FAA's regulations, because FAA then has some enforcement. Now, I do think the enforcement is, they just make them become private, but, I mean, with some of the additional funding comes higher standards, so being public, I think, would be bet, I think it would be beneficial for the neighbors. I would think everybody would want it to be public. That's just my, that's just my thought. It would benefit the neighbors to have it be public, not, I would, initially, I was thinking it being public meant it was gonna be more planes going in and out, but that number of planes, being public or private, doesn't have anything to do with it. It would just be more highly regulated.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's why I think, actually, it would be a good thing if you tried to become a public airport, but I, I don't know that that should be, that councils, that we should have anything to do with that at this point.
Yeah, I'm not speaking for them, but I believe that is the position of the neighbors, and I see some heads nodding. Uh, Mr. Harding?
Okay, thanks. Um, I, I guess, what I was expecting Mr. Ackerman to say, um, I don't ever see the ability to get there, is probably what I thought, because I think with the, the number of property acquisitions that would have to be made, and probably that, the, the demolition or raising of structures would, would probably make that unattainable. I thought that was gonna be the answer, but I, I'm, I'm torn on this. I mean, I, I, I know it was a, a public use airport before, but there are reasons why it's not now, and because of some of the, the concerns, the, the guidelines that are not currently being met from the FAA standards, or what would be kind of FAA guidelines, caused me concern when I heard that, so. And I, I'm torn on that, but I'm gonna let Mr. Rowe talk me off the ledge.
Mr. Rowe?
Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking at a document that came from planning, and item number six on that document requires all existing airspace violations from the FAA slash NDOT must be brought into compliance. So, that's one of the conditions of going forward. Mr. England, yeah, just, just clarify it, am I reading that right?
Eric England, Planning Department, yes, and I touched on this earlier, as I sit here, I'm not fully comfortable of the language of that condition, you know, and so, that's what I talked about, we have separate, we have the zoning matters, and then this, um, you know, that's hindsight, obviously, and perhaps that condition should have been worded differently, so, um, we're obviously trying to just cover the safety component aspect in bringing, you know, the site into as much compliance or full compliance as possible, but, um, if it, you know, if it's true that there are certain violations that can't be addressed by the FAA or, or Nebraska Department of Transportation Aviation District, then can that condition be met, is a question that, that's valid, so, that, I'm sorry, that's the best that I can answer, and apologize, perhaps it wasn't worded differently or more clear.
Well, if I read it that way, and if I understand it that way, and that's the way it is, I feel more comfortable voting yes on this, you know, knowing that those safety issues are gonna be taken care of, that, you know, like Ms. Johnson talked about, and I'm more comfortable with that.
The airport operates today with violations, can continue to operate tomorrow. There's no set criteria that that needs to be done before building permit or anything like that, so how much teeth does that condition really have, I guess, is, um, worth throwing out there?
Okay. Mr. Hart?
Pat, would you come up, please? I guess, for a lack of a better way to say it, I, it sounds like you let the genie out of the bottle. So, if and when you were to take this airport back to public standing, would it be your intent to acquire FFA, FAA dollars?
I would have to be what's called a NIPIS. Uh, it's a NPIS, Virgil probably knows it better than I do, but it's a criteria for an airport that's even above the state standards for federal dollars, and it's very likely that I would never be able to qualify for that, because there's already four NIPIS airports in the area, and my airport's not probably large enough to achieve NIPIS dollars. So, again, um, there's a technical piece there, but, uh, it likely, I could never get federal funding for it.
So, you, you, so what I'm hearing you say is, it would never be your intent to try to acquire FAA dollars?
Because I probably couldn't, so, yes.
Okay, so you're saying you would never intend to acquire FAA dollars?
Yes, sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sir?
Virgil Leckmiller, 14710 West Dodge.
Hypothetically speaking, if this airport were to get to a standard to where they could apply for FFA doll, FAA dollars, would the FF, FAA grant that money knowing that there were living quarters on the property?
The FAA goes through a very strict, uh, uh, policy, they, before you get the NIPIS, after you get that NIPIS, uh, classification, you gotta go through what it's called, an airport layout plan, and then that a, a, airport layout plan's gotta be approved by the FAA, which shows all the, the improvements that you're looking for, and also looks at all the airspace restrictions. So, if there's restrictions on the airport, that'd be one of the items that they would have to be addressed before they approve that airport, airport layout plan, and that has to, you have to have that in place before you're even eligible for any FAA federal money.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Harding?
Thanks, sorry, it's back to me. Um, I wanna make sure I'm clear on a couple of things. I believe, um, Virgil or Eric, yeah, probably Virgil, um, we as a body, we as a city council, wouldn't have any decision making, we wouldn't be involved in the decision making process if there was an application to go from private use to public use, is that correct?
Virgil Leckmiller, 14710 West Dodge. I don't, the question is, would your, would, would he have to come back to you for any future improvements?
Mm-hmm. Well, no, for, if, if there was, um, for approval from public, from private use to public use.
No, that would strictly, first goes through state of Nebraska, they would, uh, designate it as public.
Okay. All right, so let me, now I'm gonna ask law. And look down my, the line here as well, too, because, um, if there is, if there is an amendment to the special use permit to limit it to the current owner, could we also at least put in, could we, I'm, this, now, back to the law, could we also put in a requirement that if there is an application to change it from public to private, uh, from private to public use, that it comes back to the city council for review?
Matt Kuzi Law Department, I, I'm not comfortable with the, if you do something in the future, you have to come back to us. I, I don't think that's a feasible option to put on a property owner who gets the special use permit. I do think that the ordinance, which talks about, uh, conditions of approval for special use permits, that you can impose limitations or restrictions upon operations, there's also a catch-all provision in there about compatibility and the surrounding environment, uh, public health and safety, but more importantly, I do think that the language about limitations or restrictions upon operations does give the council the ability to put that restriction on the special use permit, and if the applicant wanted to change the special use permit from that, then that would have to come back in front of council. So, I think that might be a roundabout way of achieving what you were looking for, but some sort of perspective, what would, you know, going forward, if they wanted to do something in the future, that's not really something that's feasible.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I wanna make sure I understood that, because I'm not sure that I did. So, we could make that one of the, the, add that to one of the conditions of approval, and not a, not attach that to the special use permit?
I think you can make that, it's, it's, sorry, it's conditions of approval for the special use permit, is that, the code does talk about limitations or restrictions upon operations. So, I was talking about the approval for the special use permit in sixteen and seventeen.
And that's what I was, that's what my initial question was, whether or not we could add that into this, a requirement of the special use permit, but I think you just said, we cannot do it there, right?
You could do it today and say, you have to be a private airport. I think that would fall into limitations or restrictions upon operations. I do not think that you could say, dear sir, if you're gonna change your mind and go from public to private, or the other way around, private to public, that you have to come back to us. I think that you would have to make that condition on the approval of the special use permit today.
I understand. Uh, yes. Mr. Fanslaw?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, just, it may, if, if that's what one of you are thinking, and I'll look at Matt as I say this, we don't, we don't differentiate private or public, so you might wanna say private as defined by whoever defines the state, maybe? Just my opinion.
Virgil, who would that be? Who, who defines, is that the FAA that defines it that way?
The FAA probably has the overall definition of it, but the state of Nebraska would make that classification.
And I probably would add one more caveat, even though I wasn't called on, to Mr. Fanslaw's point, while the amendment that was mentioned earlier by Councilmember Melton, the clerk and I have the sufficient language for that amendment, should the council move to vote on it. For the one that we're discussing here with regards to the FAA and that kind of approval, I'm not comfortable with the council, I, I'm not wild about floor amendments, period, just a personal preference, but a floor amendment of that nature would be something that would need to be crafted by the law department to adequately express what you're seeking, what planning recommends, what planning's consultant recommends, and to comply with that language. I'm not comfortable with coming up with language for that sort of amendment here on the floor today. Of course, we'll do it, it's just not preferable.
Understood.
So, I, I agree with that last point. Anything up and above the floor amendment that was just discussed, which could potentially apply to numbers sixteen and seventeen, if that was of, of interest to the council, I do think this should be laid over to work on.
There are no further lights at the moment.
I'll just make a motion to approve 13 through 15. If no one wants to make any.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second? There's a motion, a second to approve items 13 through 15. No further lights, Mr. Harding.
I think there's, in reading back through the recommendations, or through the recommendation of the planning board approvals, that I go to number six, all existing airspace violations from FAA and DOT must be brought into compliance. And I know Mr. Englund has said that there may be some, what, maybe what was intended for this, at this time, for the, the private operation, might be different than when it goes, if it's ever applied to for a public use airport, I think. I think that language covers that. So I don't know that at this time, I'm gonna make an amendment as we preview, or what we were just discussing, Mr. Cousy.
Thank you, there's a motion, a second to approve items 13, 14, and 15, with no further lights. Roll call.
Hug.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
No.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 13 through 15 are approved four to three.
Item 16.
Item 16, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the special use permit, that it can only, it will only apply to the applicant and shall not continue with the land. Do you want to correct, do you want to correct me if I've misstated that?
Councilmember Melton, would your motion be a motion to amend that as provided for in section 55-884 subsection P, subsection two, this use permit shall be specific to this applicant only and shall not run with the land?
That's exactly what, what I meant to say. So that would be my motion.
I got it.
There's a motion, a second to amend number 16, that adds that condition to the special use permit. No further lights. Roll call.
Hug.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
No.
Bagley.
No.
Harding.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved four to three.
Does that need to be as amended, or does that approve that item?
I think we need to as amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Hug.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
No.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 as amended is approved four to three.
Item 17.
Item number 17, I would like to make the same motion using the same language as previously stated in 16.
Motion, a second to add the same condition to the special use permit as number 16. No further lights. Roll call.
Hug.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
No.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved four to three.
Motion, motion to approve as amended.
As amended, roll call.
Hug.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
No.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 as amended is approved four to three.
Thank you all for your testimony. Next item, please.
Items 18 through 20 can be considered together for property located northeast of 66th Street and Ames Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 18, an ordinance to rezone this property from R5 District and CC District to LO District. Item 19, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC major overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 20, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from low-density residential to office commercial.
Public hearing and vote on items 18, 19, and 20 are today. Proponents, please.
Councilmembers, John Blumenthal, the Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of applicant Centrus Federal Credit Union. I just have a few hours' remarks, if you'll bear with me here. Centrus currently operates a branch location at 4804 Ames Avenue. They've operated that branch for 15 years and have outgrown that branch. They've been looking for a suitable location to continue to serve their members in that location. They've purchased property at 65th Avenue and Ames Avenue, which will work great for a new branch location, which requires a rezoning of one parcel and amendment to the master plan. We're here today to answer any questions that the council may have. I also have representatives of Centrus and our engineer here as well to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Seeing none.
Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion to approve in a second, roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 18 through 20 are approved seven to zero. Item 21, a resolution to approve a large project special, special use permit to allow development over 10 acres in the GI District located southeast of 20th and East Locust Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today, proponents, please. Thanks for your patience.
Good evening. My name is Candace Gregory, and I'm the president and CEO of the Open Door Mission, and for more than 70 years, we've been serving those that are experiencing homelessness and poverty. Over the last number of years, since the city moved us to the current location, we've been developing a very safe therapeutic environment for men, women, and families. We offer over 40 programs for free to the community, and we have worked very hard with our city planning, as well as our architect and our engineers, to develop growth on our campus, to expand our programs to meet the needs of our community. And so today, we're asking for a special use permit to continue to enhance the programs that we offer at the Open Door Mission.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Terry Morrison with Airheart Griffin and Associates, 3552 Farnham Street. I'm the civil engineer on the project, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve in a second, Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Candace, I just wanted to say you don't have to get up, but thanks for all the work you do for our community and those in need. I think, well, one quick question for you, this was expanded in the past before, was it not?
Correct.
Okay, when was that, like 10 years ago?
Goodness, I've been with the Open Door Mission for 28 years, and so the years do run together, but we did do an expansion and built four new buildings that are currently on the existing four city block radius, and we started that in approximately 2008.
Okay, and I remember that, there were times that I went and volunteered with the great work that you organize people to do for our community, so I, I want to thank you for everything you and your team do.
Thank you.
And I hope one day you're put out of business, that we don't need you anymore.
Amen.
But that's something that we're dealing with, post-COVID especially, so I want to be really happy to support this and thank you again to your team and all the work you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
And what is your timeline for this to be operational?
In the master plan that we provided, the very first building is a hospitality center, and we have secured all the funding for that facility. And the second part is to renovate our existing men's center, we need more space for our men that are experiencing emergency services, and that money has been secured. So the other phases will come as the funding is secured.
Okay, great, thank you. No further lights, roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following consent agenda, in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items 22 through 26 were held on May 14th. There's no, go ahead, yeah. I'll second. No further lights, roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 22 to 26 are approved, seven to zero.
There's been a request to remove items 32, 33, and 34 from the public hearing agenda, consent agenda. So first, we'll take the public hearings on agenda items number 27 through 31. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent. If you are proponent or an opponent, this is 27 through 31. Seeing none, public hearings are closed.
Move the approval of 27 to 31.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 27 through 31 are approved, seven to zero. Item 32, a resolution to approve the purchase order in the amount of $68,223 for Creative Sites LLC to furnish a 30-foot diameter octagon picnic shelter at Hanscom Park.
The public hearing on number 32 is today, proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. This project is a follow-up on the unfortunate incident that happened back on September 26th of 2022, in which the Hanscom Park gazebo was vandalized and burned to the ground. I have an image here of that previous.
Do you have it on the table there?
Yes, I do, sorry.
There we go.
There we go.
Yeah.
The previous item, and so unfortunately, we lost that as an aspect of the park. We worked closely with a group that responded very quickly in terms of providing some donation and some services in kind to help us restore the project, or restore something similar to the original gazebo, the gazebo you see here that was unfortunately lost. And through some really good faith effort, we made some progress. Unfortunately, the contribution of the first effort to build a new structure did not meet code and did not meet the criteria for what was necessary. At that point, we reset with the donors and the groups that were wanting to contribute, and evolved into a new concept where the city came alongside in a larger way to produce or come up with the concept of this rendering here. Again, very much in the mold, very much similar as far as the spirit of the gazebo that was lost, and so now we're at a point where we're executing on the purchase of that and working with our Omaha Parks Foundation to offset some of the cost, and we also have a construction company that will be coming in to help us actually do the installation of the new product. So we're looking to move forward and bring this to the finish line before the end of this season, about an eight-week delivery on this, and then we've strategized already about the installation once it arrives.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Matt, thanks for sharing that yesterday, or I guess I emailed you on Sunday, if we can get a picture of that that you're showing there today. And I sent that to the Hanscom Park and Field Club neighbors and say, butt up to that, and I think it's gonna be great. So when you said this season, what, what's this season, is that by fall, or?
Yeah, yeah, so just anticipating that about eight-week delivery, construction delivery time of the product, this product that we're ordering, should be used during the time that we still call our peak season here, so early fall.
Okay, that's great, and I know you and I had talked on the Parks Committee about some, the private sector that's helping, and people that originally contributed their, their financial resources for this, so the reboot is good, and I'm, I'm looking forward in the fall when this is up and we can all enjoy it, and I'll see it down there when we get it, the ribbon cut for it, so, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll make a motion to support this.
I'll second. No further lights, roll call.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 32 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item 33, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with Berry Dunn McNeil and Parker LLC in the amount of $340,000 for development of the city's 20-year comprehensive parks and recreation master plan to guide future decisions for parks and recreation in the city.
Public hearing and vote on number 33 is today, proponents?
Mr. President, members of the city council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm incredibly excited to be standing here to talk to you about this process and this project. As many of you know, the city is embarking on a venture to really look at the comprehensive plan for the entire city, but this part, very specific to parks and recreation, is something that when I first started here, almost four years ago, was a goal of mine, and so to have these things be syncing up the way they are is incredibly exciting. So last time anything was done in regards to parks and recreation, perhaps outside of some work specific to certain areas of development in our city or the system in relation to parks and rec was 1997, and that's a date being referenced in regards to the entire city reset of the comprehensive plan. So for us to be doing something like this, it's a long time coming, it's a specific plan about parks and rec that will come in underneath the umbrella of the comprehensive plan, and I know there'll be some others to talk about that piece of it, or where we fit in amongst that. But with that being said, we went through our process that we do in regards to soliciting and then selecting professional services, and we evaluated the submissions we received and made the selection internally to bring that to you today of Berry Dunn as our potential consulting partner to execute on this project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, almost good evening, council, president. My name is Teresa Jackson, I'm with Berry Dunn, and I will be the project manager for the project. We did prepare a brief slideshow to share with you today, so you could get a sense of how the project will move along over the next year. Not sure if that's queued up. Let me zoom down here, maybe. Right, right here. Thank you, there it is. So I'll move through this relatively quickly, we just wanted to give you a general sense as to what to expect over the course of the planning effort. So within Berry Dunn, we have a number of subject matter experts, two of which who are with me today, both James Mickles and Hibba Sala are here with me today, will be kicking off the project with some of your team members tomorrow, but in addition to the Berry Dunn team, we've also engaged Vireo, which is a local landscape architect, and they'll be leading the level of service aspect of the project, as well as the Trails Master Plan. And then additionally, we have ETC Institute, who will facilitate a statistically valid survey. So taking a look briefly at our approach, we aligned very closely to the RFP and its eight phases. Across those eight phases, we have 15 deliverables, and we'll be working closely with your team throughout the planning effort, delivering the, these various aspects, so that all along, they're tracking the direction the project is going, and there's a high comfort level with the analysis work that we've completed, as well as our community engagement. Ultimately, we're looking at about a 14-month planning effort with adoption in June of 2025. One of the key aspects of our work is our community engagement, and that was very critical to your team here in Omaha, and very important, and really a hallmark of the work that Berry Dunn does. So as we begin meeting with your team, what we really want to dig into is, who are those, who can we reach, how can we reach those historically underserved populations? How can we reach people where they are? And what are the activities and programs that are always, already occurring that we can leverage to really maximize our engagement opportunities? We use a variety of, of methods for engagement, whether it's pop-up engagement at a farmer's market, setting up engagement stations at your various city facilities and community centers, going out to special events, or having focus group sessions. So we'll work with your team to understand what's worked historically, what hasn't, and again, who are those hard-to-reach populations that we really want to connect with. Additionally, we'll have a project website, that's one of our main sources of connecting with the community. The project website is not only about us sharing details about the project and the direction it's headed, but it's also about gathering information. There'll be a number of tools on the website that community members can engage with and provide feedback on. One of my favorites is a community map, where community members can drop pens and tell[1760.98] tell us what they love about a space, or maybe what needs to be improved in a space. I mentioned the statistically valid survey that ETC will be facilitating. This is a real critical aspect of any planning effort. It helps us to not only reach the users of your facilities, but those non-users, those individuals that maybe don't have a high level of awareness of a planning effort such as this. They'll receive the survey in the mail and have an opportunity to participate. Ultimately, we're looking for only a five percent margin of error, which means a ninety-five percent confidence level in that if we administered the survey a hundred times, ninety-five times it would come back with the same results. So looking at level of service, large park system, we want to take a look at how your level of service is occurring from where your parks are located to the amenities within your park, and then drilling down into the different areas of the city, laying over demographics, and comparing and contrasting to see where you could potentially have gaps in the system, and trying to identify a consistent level of service across the city. We're also going to take a look at your programs, taking a look at things such as program lifecycle, comparing who you're serving through your programs to your demographics. Ultimately, also looking at equitable distribution and access. So we'll do some mapping so we can identify where your programs are occurring and if they're equitable across the city. Vireo will be taking a look at your current maintenance and operations, so taking a look at current SOPs, what your standards look like, where potentially there could be some improvements and what that looks like to the system. This example here is in Johnson County, Kansas, where they identified five levels of maintenance. And then we're able to take a look at how each acre was currently being serviced based on those five levels. We'll be doing an operations assessment. This is where we take a deep dive into the organizational chart. We talk with staff, we have staff interviews, we do a SWOT analysis, we look at span of control. We also take a look at your historic operational and capital budgets. This all leads up to benchmarking, and benchmarking is a key aspect where we compare and contrast the city against similar-sized agency. So again, taking a look at those FTEs and those budgets, also dipping into your per-capita spending and looking at how you compare to other similar-sized agencies. And all of this leads up to an ultimate goal the department has identified to become CAPRA accredited. What CAPRA accredited is, it's through the National Parks and Recreation Association. There's two hundred agencies across the country that presently have accreditation, and it is a rigorous process, but ultimately, it really shows the significant way in which an agency is serving its community through its operation and management. And through this process, we're going to help the department to start to get down that path. So looking at policies, developing a comprehensive plan that is in alignment with CAPRA accreditation, so that they'll have the tools to take this document and move forward towards accreditation, which is about a year-long process. And then last but not least, this comprehensive plan also includes a Trails Master Plan. So Vireo will also lead this aspect. And one of the key things that they're looking at, or two of the key things, is first, where are people trying to get and what plans are already underway? And that's a very important piece. That'll help us to identify where there could be potential gaps in the system, and then develop how we prioritize addressing those gaps, what the solutions are and what the cost involved with addressing those gaps are over time. So I shared a lot with you relatively quickly. I tried to move through at a rapid pace with the goal of just trying to give you a sense of what to expect over the next fourteen months, and I'm happy to take any questions if that's appropriate in this format.
Good. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? I don't think I've ever seen one of those in our parks.
Good evening, members of city council. Derek Miller, City Planning Staff. I'm excited as well for this process. Like we talked this morning, there's a lot of planning work that has happened recently and a lot of planning work in front of us. The Planning Department and Parks Department have been coordinating on this, on both our comp plan update and their Parks Master Plan, and will continue to coordinate, especially on the public engagement. We have a lot of strategies planned, ideas moving forward with the engagement for the comp plan. We want to make sure that is well coordinated with the engagement of the Parks Master Plan because we don't want to ask the same person twice, three times. People get tired of talking about the same thing over and over. The other thing that what this does for the comp plan, everyone loves parks, so if they're willing to talk about parks, they can come to us and talk about the future of your city. So again, excited for this effort to kick off and kicking off tomorrow, right? Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. I'll just give a brief remark here that I'm very supportive of this, too. I think a great park system is one of the most important things the city can do, and we've had some really substantial park improvements in our city recently, but we can't forget about our neighborhood parks, too. So I know that's part of the idea here, and I want to make sure that happens. And then one last editorial. We had this conversation just this morning in the Planning Department. I can tick off literally six major planning documents we have underway here at the city, probably more than that, that are substantive in nature and are going to require a lot of staff resource and eventually a lot of resources to actually implement. So I just want to make that observation and say that the next steps on all these things in terms of implementation are very important. Did you want to comment on that, Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. You're absolutely right, and I think, I know our department has talked about this, and Derek has been a part of this conversation. It's just a really exciting time with all that is in motion, and that's syncing up under the comprehensive plan. So I've been part of multiple master plan processes through previous positions with Parks and Recreation over the last twenty years of my career, and they do, I've seen them change the dynamic, I've seen them change the narrative in regards to investment in terms of opportunity prioritizing, reaching more of the community. And so this is really a best practice. Again, it's very fortuitous that we're lining up with what the city is doing as a whole. And as Derek mentioned, we've already done some strategizing where from here, that's one of the next big steps to ensure we are in sync about the way we're reaching out to the community and we're engaging in the way that's most productive to get all of what we're working on to be at the highest level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-three is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item thirty-four, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement in the total amount of five million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for JEO Consulting Group as the design consultant for the Tranquility Park Multi-Sports Complex.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-four is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the city council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. So this project is one we've been talking about for a long time, going back to the announcement of the intent to commit to this project in June of last year. And this is really a focus on what I would call a transformational project, not only for the fact that we're looking to capitalize on the growing youth sports tourism industry and all that's happening in our region and things that we're maybe missing out on in terms of just the way we want to continue to grow the connectivity to our city, but more importantly, the immediate need to serve our youth and to serve the residents here in Omaha with this kind of state-of-the-art facility. So there's already been some great brainstorming, there was a lot of information swirling even before we committed to this process through the mayor's commitment at that time last year. And so again, similar to what we did with the master plan, put our system or activated our system to bring together our team and selection of a professional services partner. And we are here presenting, obviously, JEO, and I've invited Matt Selinger of JEO to also be here today to share and be part of bringing you information about the full scope of the project.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak?
Mr. President, city council, Matt Selinger with JEO, 11213 Davenport Street. I'm here representing the consultant team. It is a good-sized team that we put together to accomplish Tranquility Park. I did not bring a presentation, but I will just start off by asking. I'll start off by asking, has anything interesting happened at Tranquility today? Has anybody seen any pictures of what's going on at Tranquility today? The flooding there is one of the issues that needs to be addressed as part of the project. So it's a complex project. It is an exciting project. It's, you used the word "transformational" project, it really is. And what our team wants to do is to work with the city to create a kind of a tranquility experience. It's a park that's for everyone, instead of having little pockets of this goes on here and this goes on there. But it's a park that you want to go to during the week, you want to stop there with your family, and then yes, there's of course all the sports components and things that will go on there. So it's going to be fantastic. We have five people on the team that are experts at doing each one of their components, and then JEO has a major, a major leading role in the project. I'm here to answer questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton?
Matt, if you'd come up, I want to thank you. I'm so excited. Like, I mean, we're finally, we have a vote, we've already voted on the funding, but now this really, it's kind of our very first step in showing that we're starting to run now.
Yeah.
And so I'm very excited about this. But remind everybody about the funding. I mean, we're going to be paying for this project. We've got the turnback tax.
Correct.
That was approved.
Yes.
And also revenue bonds, because this area, Tranquility Park, actually will create revenue as well. So we're not just taking this away from roads or something else, because that's what we'll hear.
Correct.
The funding for this is that it's almost kind of self-funding. Is that correct?
Exactly, yes. Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director, you're right, that's why we're here, or how we're here. The vision for this project goes back more than a decade, but it was the turnback tax activated through the state legislature and some other mechanisms, obviously, revenue from the facility and the models we see existing in other places that we're looking to mimic or steal a lot of the really great information and function that they've already established from. There'll be the potential overlay of an EAA, and so the, you know, collection of all that is, yes, making it a self-sustaining enterprise function program. And so we're, we've been setting up a lot of those details even prior to getting up to this point, just to ensure that we do have everything ready to start to execute on this and really go full speed now with the potential approval of this to get to some of the aggressive timeline that we put together, the activation that we're hoping to have line up with the development that is a complement for this. And again, just the stars aligning in regards to how this is maybe an ideal way to go about producing this, a little different than some who did it in other places, we see being successful, maybe had a little harder time getting off the ground. So again, very, very happy about the way we're here, talking about this model and what could be, and as we start the consulting and design process.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
A motion to approve.
Just a motion in a second. Hey, Matt, this is the design contract. We have an estimate for the overall cost at this point. Is that known?
So the original estimate, that was, part of our first announcement, was fifty-four million dollar total renovation. So as many know, most know, the soccer footprint that exists there today is something that we're looking to really work off of, is kind of an existing part of the facility, but then we're establishing new infrastructure with the baseball, softball side, and then the things that have been part of the tranquility footprint that are there will continue to exist in terms of the ice facility, the tennis, the natural surface trails. So again, this complement, and as Matt mentioned, just this total service opportunity through tranquility to really make people feel like it's a part of the community, it's a special opportunity to invite people into Omaha, and I think it's meeting all of that criteria for us.
And the fifty-four million dollar estimate is covered by revenue bonds in turnback? There's no philanthropic participation or other private funds?
So that is actually something we're pursuing, and the opportunity there is to potentially really springboard us ahead as far as our long-term maintenance that we know is going to be an aspect of things that's built into PERFORMA, but we have other investment interests, we have other athletic field development interests. So we're trying to see how much we can actually accomplish, not just on the site, but in terms of the bigger vision for accommodating and providing for youth and athletic opportunity in all of Omaha.
I think curling's coming, too.
Curling is coming, yes. There's another one. Yeah, he was trying to keep that, you went there. No, that was good.
They are privately fundraising, but I think what you're talking about here does not incorporate that, right?
Not specifically as part of the model, no. But we are pursuing some new things, and again, thank you to the council for even making this a possibility last year when we talked about sponsorship at park and recreation properties and sports complexes. That is an avenue that many who are existing and succeeding in a way that, again, we hope to mimic, are able to supplement and grow in terms of revenue. So that's a part of this that we'll continue to work with the council on very specifically.
And two thousand and twenty-six is the goal, right?
Correct, yes.
For completion.
Yeah, working closely with the CVB, trying to set some of those timeframes, and this is obviously a big step in terms of identifying that. Their team, Deb Ward and her staff, are already pursuing some of those things that we might attract here. The other benefit, again, of bringing those things into Omaha is those participants who are looking for that level of participation aren't having to go to Kansas City, Des Moines, Minneapolis, these other places, they're going to be able to do that right here in our backyard. And again, we're going to benefit from that economically, not only directly with the impact of the funding on the development of the facility, but the surrounding area and the overall economic impact of the city.
Thank you. For the lights, there was a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-four is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item thirty-five, a resolution to approve an agreement in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents for artisan roofing to construct the park pavilion at Fontana Park.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-five is approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-six, a resolution to approve the nomination of Ben Shoder Avenue as a commemorative street name on Thirty-second Avenue from Francis Street to Martha Street.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-six is today. Proponents, please. I think we had a proponent registered for Zoom, but I'm pretty sure that proponent is no longer there.
She actually just rejoined.
Okay, great. All right. Alyssa, we'll get you off mute here in one minute. Okay, try, one more minute here. Okay, I think we have you off mute now. Want to try that?
Yes, apologies, sorry.
That's okay, it's been a long day.
I appreciate you taking my comment. I just wanted to speak in favor of this. I actually live in Garnet Valley, Pennsylvania, where I'm speaking to you from right now, and I put in this motion for this street to be renamed after my late grandparents.
Excellent.
Who have been away in the last three years.
And can you just give us your name and address for the record? I think we're back on mute.
Sorry. Alyssa Mahalik, 301 Willetts Way, Garnet Valley, Pennsylvania.
Great. And you want to tell us about her a little bit? Back on mute, I think, again?
Yes, so both of my grandparents were not lifelong residents of the city of Omaha, but were certainly outstanding citizens. My grandfather, Benny Leon Benny Ben Scooter, was the president of, vice president of Technology Services at Creighton University for several decades. He was honored with the Distinguished Faculty Administrator Award right before he retired in nineteen ninety-seven, and he also served on the Omaha Cable TV Advisory Board for eight years. My grandmother, Dr. Reba Ben Scooter, worked at the University of Nebraska Omaha in the Medical Center. She was the Associate Dean of Allied Health Professions at the end of her career, and she is credited with leading a project team that conducted the first two-way closed-circuit medical visit at the Nebraska Psychiatric Institute, and that was heralded later as the first known United States health of medicine visit. They were also very active in Our Lady of Lourdes Parish and several other nonprofit organizations as volunteers, most notably the Stephen Center Homeless Shelter, to which they gave countless hours of their time and were very generous with donations in kind as well. And I appreciate your consideration of this commemorative designation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you for sharing that story with us. Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Alyssa, you can probably hear, but I'm going to be glad to make a motion and support this today. And I really enjoyed reading about your grandparents, they're J-Skers, right? So grandpa was at Creighton, and your grandma was at UNMC, and it really, you think of a teledoc, your grandma pioneered that. I mean, there's technology, we got our cell phones, you can talk to your doctor in confidence, and that was pretty cool reading when I researched your grandmother, that she was a pioneer in that, so and the great work she did at Our Lady of Lourdes Parish. It's a nice honor, and I'm glad to support this today. Thanks, Mr. President.
Third, motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes. Yes.
Item 36 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 37, a resolution to approve the nomination of Danita D. Webb Drive as a commemorative street name on 36th Street from Reddick Avenue to Curtis Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number 37 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton. Row. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 37 is approved, seven to zero. Item 38, a resolution to approve the nomination of Families of the Stolen Avenue as a commemorative street name on Commercial Avenue from Sailor Street to Ames Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number 38 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
A motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton. Row. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 38 is approved, seven to zero. Item 39, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 32 of the Omaha Municipal Code relating to watershed management fees.
The public hearing on number 39 is today. Proponents, please.
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works. If you would like, I can make comments on 39, 40, and 41, and tie those all together.
I think that's okay.
Okay.
I think we have to do them separately, but go ahead.
So 39 is an update to the fees for our watershed fees that we apply to new development with our Papio watershed partnership, and those fees go to support the flood control system that the Papio NRD constructs along the Papio watershed. So some of those older, larger dams, that Lake Cunningham, Standing Bear, those were pre, when we had the fees in place, but more recently, Flanagan, was paid for by those watershed fees that we're supporting through this. If Flanagan Lake wasn't there today, that flooding could have been a lot worse on the big Papio Creek system. So that's why we have the agreement with those fees, they help flood control and us building flood control structures in the Papio NRD system. That's 39, that's the update of the fee schedule. 40 is the update of the inter-local agreement of the Papio watershed partnership and our partners, Bellevue, Boystown, Gretna, Povista, Papillion, Rolston, Sarpy County, and the Papio NRD, and it's just an update of our agreement with those partners and adopting that. That partnership has been in place since 2009. And 41 is a payment to the Papio NRD from the city of Omaha, so they can upgrade the culverts that we own through their flood control system. So we have infrastructure in the Papio NRD flood control system, the levees along the Papio Creek that we own, okay? So when they are updating their flood control system, our infrastructure, we pay to upgrade our infrastructure to support them providing us flood control. So all of that ties in together of those three items and why they're important for what we went through today.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 39? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll just comment, we mentioned this morning, the Papio Missouri NRD, that's an outstanding team, and as you said, Jim, those creeks that are full of water, those are what those were designed to do, right, to help flood mitigation. So when people see all those creeks where they're at, that is the great work that the NRD does to mitigate and protect lives and property through flood mitigation, so.
So the city owns and operates what protects us from the Missouri River. The Papio NRD protects a majority of the city because of the Papio Creek. So yes, those channels and the levees associated with those channels, those are maintained and operated by the Papio NRD, and we provide funding to help support that infrastructure with some of these things you're approving today.
Thanks, and that's a great partnership that I, is sitting on the NRD board for a couple of years before the City Council. It really is a great use of a partnership in the work they do. I always want to commend them, so thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll call up number 40.
Item 40, an ordinance to approve a continuation of the Papillion Creek Watershed Partnership Interlocal Agreement.
Public hearing on number 40 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item 41, an ordinance to approve Amendment Number Two to the Interlocal Agreement with the Papio Missouri River Natural Resource District for the Construction of Drainage Structure Rehabilitation for the Little Papio Creek Levy Channel Project.
Public hearing on number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 42, an ordinance to approve the 1508 Marcy Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 42 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Don Satan, City Planning, here for any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents? You get to go last, huh?
Brett Beller, 1140 West End Road, I think, here for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents? Last call for opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items. Items 43 through 68 do not require a public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton. Row.